Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, September 17th Olympia City Council Business Meeting. We do have a quorum this evening. For the record, the Finance Committee met earlier this evening and a report will be given later on tonight's agenda. I have a request from the city manager to briefly introduce an important new addition to the executive management of the Department of Community Planning and Development. And if I could, with council's indulgence, I will turn this briefly over under announcements to our city manager.
Thank you, and thank you, council, for allowing me to do this early. Last meeting we were going to have Leonard here. He stayed late, but he had to be in Shalane the very next morning, so we kind of cut him loose, so thank you for letting me introduce him today. Leonard Bauer is the new deputy director of our Department of Community Planning and Development. He comes to us from the State Department of Commerce, and he's done lots of other things, which I'll tell you about. We're really excited because as the council knows, we're doing quite a few things in the planning arena these days with our Shoreline Master Program and our Comprehensive Plan and our Neighborhood Subarea Plans and about 1,000 other things. So we are delighted to have Leonard. Leonard has been a resident of the city of Olympia for 22 years. Most recently, he was the Managing Director of the state's Growth Management Services Program, which provided services to over 320 cities and counties across the state, so we bring all that wealth of knowledge with Leonard to the program. He was also the Director of Community Development for the city of Sumner. He was nine years as a planner and planning manager at the city of Tumwater. He is a nationally accredited planner with the American Institute of Certified Planners. He has a Masters of Urban Planning from the University of Oregon, and he is originally from Yakima. So I have not yet had the opportunity to give him a bad time of being a duck, but other than that, we're looking forward to him working with us. So Leonard, maybe you'd like to say hi.
Welcome, Leonard.
Well, thanks very much. A pleasure to be here and, you know, working with all of you on the council and with your staff. You have, as you know, an excellent staff. I'm real proud to be part of it, and unfortunately, I'm not only a duck, but I'm also a cougar. So if any of you are Huskies, I know I have two strikes already, but I'll try to make it up.
No strikes in this game. I think we're lucky to have you, so welcome aboard.
Thanks.
Any council member questions or comments? Leonard, thanks so much for being here.
Appreciate being here.
It's good to see you. Okay. With that, I'm going to move to approval of the agenda. I do have a recommendation from the Finance Committee to place discussion of the appropriation ordinance for the Washington Center for the Performing Arts, which is currently item 4K on tonight's consent calendar. I have a recommendation to move it to Other Business, and I recommend that it be the first item of discussion under Other Business. And I would ask for a motion to approve tonight's agenda as proposed.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved by Councilmember Rogers and seconded by Councilmember Langer to approve tonight's agenda as proposed. Any discussion? With no discussion, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We unanimously have approved tonight's agenda. I will move us directly to public communication. During this portion of the meeting, citizens may address the council regarding items related to city business, including items on tonight's agenda. The only exception is for issues pertaining to topics that the city council either held or will be holding a public hearing on in either the last 45 days or in the next 45 days. Individual testimony is limited to three minutes or less. In order to hear from as many people as possible during the 30 minutes set aside for this purpose, the council refrains from commenting on individual testimony until all public comment has been received. I will note for the record that on August 20th, we held a public hearing regarding the Division Street annexation, and on October 8th, we are scheduled to have hearings on our wastewater management plan, our 2014 through 2019 capital facilities plan, and the proposed Cooper Point area annexation. So, public comment accepted for any items other than those, and I will invite to the podium Carol Person.
Can you hear me okay?
Excellent.
Good.
I have a volunteer someplace that was going to hand out. Oh, snuck up behind me, did he? I'm here representing Protect Our Children, which is in opposition to the consideration of a low-barrier shelter in Olympia. And in the process, we decided it might be beneficial to ask you to sign a pledge to not support it. So I'd like to read what the pledge is as it's being distributed. To the mayor, Stephen Buxbaum, Mayor Pro Tem Nathaniel Jones, council members Jim Cooper, Julie Hinkins, Stephen Langer, Janine Rowe, and Karen Rogers. Candidates, Prophet Atlantis, Darren Mills, Cheryl Selby, and Mike Volz. Children are the most valuable, excuse me, vulnerable members of our society, and we owe them a life free of violence and fear. Yet here in Olympia, an organization is proposing to open a low-barrier shelter that will house sex offenders, drug addicts, and other people who refuse to play by the rules. This low-barrier shelter poses a clear threat and does not belong near our children, the elderly, and other vulnerable populations. It is time for Olympia's leaders to put children first and sign the Protect Our Children pledge. Please mail the signed pledge postmarked by September 23rd, 2013, to the address below. And the pledge further states, "I will retract all political and financial support for any low-barrier shelter open to sex offenders, drug addicts, or criminals located within one-half mile of any of the following: public schools, private schools, trade schools, and colleges; daycare facilities, after-school facilities, and child nurseries; neighborhoods, whether formally recognized or not; downtown; public parks, private parks, playgrounds, sports fields, and trails; hospitals and other medical facilities; senior citizen facilities and group homes for seniors; group homes and facilities for the mentally disabled; group homes and facilities for other vulnerable populations." So what we're asking is that, this time, let's put our children first. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jeffrey Jaxich?
My name is Jeff Jaxich, and I live at 812 San Francisco Avenue Northeast Olympia, Washington. You know my background, many of you. I've obviously been around 30-plus years involved with this community. I also have a real priority for children, and I did attend the meeting last night at the Knox Building, and I acknowledge some of the good things we've done. In fact, this community has done an exceptional job at serving the homeless over the last 30-plus years. We have so many exemplary programs here, and to be frank with you, I had some concerns about the meeting once the decision was made not to locate it at 10th and East Side. How that decision was made is something I'm actually going to put before you as a real concern. Certainly, Carol gave you an overview of the concern of the community. It reflects a large part of our community, and it's very, very serious. We can't afford to have these type of decisions made without really considering the children. Last night, a businessperson who was attending the meeting actually said he didn't have that much concern about the risk to children. But you see, I think our community starts with children. That's our future, and they have to be first and foremost in our community. I'm one who, quite frankly, likes the idea of providing shelter for the homeless. I think there are especially, I have sort of priorities, and I'm going to share them with you briefly. Mothers and children, I want to commend you for the work in the Smith Building. I think that's a really good move. So mothers, children, if we can keep families together, as long as they're not recovering ALKs, alcoholics, excuse me, and mentally ill. I think we need to create a special situation for them, especially with the state cutting back on mental health. And what I heard last night wasn't a fully formed proposal, nothing that any professional would really look at. So we need to really involve the community in this type of thing, and I would like to suggest that either the Planning Commission, which is really, really busy, or Steve Langer and the Land Use Committee take a look at developing a criteria for citing these facilities. We need to take care of the mentally ill. We need to help the people that are recovering addicts. We really need to focus in on facilities that help them. But I thought this was just going to be a cold-weather shelter, and it turns out it's not. It's not well-thought-out, no location. And so I'm going to give you some criteria that was developed by the Coalition and Neighborhood Associations, and I would hope that you would consider that, Steve, and I'm sure we could get citizens in the community to come and help you come up with the criteria. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeanette Dickinson?
Good evening, council. Actually, this is the first time I've ever come to speak to council. I left in 2004, so I hope that that means something to you and why I'm here. I want you to seriously consider, as quickly as possible, to create some kind of park standards for private park development. I know that you, as a council, as well as the Park Department, have been cognizant of the West Olympia Business Association and their park plans for the last four years. So I'm kind of surprised why some kind of plan, you know, standards haven't been met. The reason I'm here today is that I've been slowly watching the private park at Division in Harrison be built. I live on the west side, as you know, for over 20 years, and actually really tried to get partners, neighbors, people with money, developers, try to do something with that corner because it would be nice to have, you know, a really nice mixed-use development with some local businesses there where people could gather, and I think people would have been happy with that. Not going to complain about a park, okay? And, you know, some people may say, "Well, you know, a well-designed 7-Eleven may be better than what I'm seeing today at the corner." Okay? So I'm walking Archie this morning, and I had to do a looky-loo rubberneck because I've been looking at that park thinking, "Gosh, it's beginning to look like a county rest stop." Okay? And today was a pretty defining day, you know, and that's with the big logs. And then the signage came up, and I thought, "Well, you know, maybe it looks like Jellystone National Park," and I could, you know, visualize Yogi Bear popping up at any minute. So today, there's the Santa Can, and when I was walking Archie, I said, "What? Oh, there's some benches." And, you know, when I was on the council, we had a whole process. We hired someone to do a standard for city benches. And, hey, I have a couple extra minutes because I've never been here before, but anyway, the, you know, I look and I see these benches, and so I was captivated, and I looked, and, you know, you need to come over to the west side. I know that the downtown is the problem child, and as a council member, I know that you spend a lot of time. You need to drive over to that corner because there are benches that are church pews that have been painted brown, and this is on top of the logs. And, you know, with the grass and maybe the new trees, this might look good now, but this winter, it's not going to look good at all. And I'm aware that, you know, this is a very prominent corner, that there needs to be design review for these standards, and this is wrong. I, you know, I'm going to spend the rest of my life driving by this park, and it's wrong.
Ms. Dickinson.
And you need to do something about it, and that's why I just wanted to say, okay.
Thanks very much. Stephen Welliver?
I'm sure you're all aware of recent headlines about heroin use at the library and multiple gun incidents, felons in possession of weapons downtown. The number of syringes exchanged in Olympia by the Thurston County Syringe Exchange alone is on pace to exceed 1.2 million. This by far eclipses the total amount of public library materials circulated, either hard copy and digital. That is why I'm here to talk about our city's future and its priorities. One day this summer, my son crashed on his bike twice in one trip on the Olympia Woodland Trail, both times within inches of a dirty, uncap needle. I have abruptly canceled outings with my sons at each and every East Side Park this summer due to syringes, not just in the bushes where my kids like to hide, but on the playgrounds and under picnic benches. Kids in the lower-income neighborhood, who live in small and stressful homes, can't afford and can't afford many books, really need their parks to be healthy and their library to gain literacy skills. Today, I walked the perimeter of the Madison School attendance area, taking photos of the evidence of IV drug use littering our community. I'll email you that collage I made so you can see in just a half-hour walk. King Five TV has done a series of reports on heroin in Stanwood area, where teens report it is as easy to get as going through a fast-food drive-through. Teens report that it is cheap and easier to obtain than cigarettes, marijuana, or alcohol. Forty students at their local high school had begun using heroin in this past year alone. I am asking the city council, in their role as civic leaders and officials, to help make heroin a focus of our town's cleanup efforts. I must emphasize that this cannot be accomplished by law enforcement alone, and this time, let's please not forget to include schools as a stakeholder. We must not be afraid to have uncomfortable conversations with enabling nonprofit social service groups. Seattle People's Harm Reduction Alliance, which is Eggy Hop's needle service, unapologetically states on its website that it is indeed not a needle exchange, but rather a needle distribution program, who gives up to 300 needles to every person a day, whether they have dirty needles to return or not. This group is run at, the group is run at all levels of organization by users for users, says its website. It also says, "What if the NAACP was run by an all-white board? Surely, they would be missing something." Well, they would indeed be missing something, and not just perspective. If the NAACP was run at all levels of organization by folks who are high on smack, then they wouldn't be effective or have any credibility. Yes, they would indeed be missing something, and not just a crap-load of dirty needles. They would appear to have missed the ravaging effects on the broader community, starting in the poppy fields of Mexico and carving a swath of violence and human suffering that terminates in our city's core, where civic life has been severely disrupted. Please make heroin a number-one priority in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard Burgess?
Yeah, my name's Richard Burgess. I live at 1309 Byrne Street, Olympia Southwest. And I'm way too scatterbrained to really read anything. When I try to write stuff down, I'm way too scatterbrained for that, too. This is my fifth time addressing the city council. I've had serious air quality issues. Right now, I have, there's an audit from the Washington State Financial Commission on Housing. This is like the fifth time this year that people have entered my apartment for inspections, or pseudo-inspections, a fire inspection, I passed the Thurston County Housing Inspection. This is like the fifth time. I feel like I'm being targeted, and I've been having air quality issues, not only the entire time in Olympia, which is very much suspect and caused significant health I'd like to say that, well, it looks like the clock's not working too well.
I was noticing that.
Yeah, for a bit of levity, the Christmas items are on sale, have been since August 26th at Goodwill in Olympia. And for the homeless thing, I think people should, they should direct it more toward warehouse space and then ship it around, put it on John in the area, and then ship that around. You don't want to trumpet it too much. For financially, for Olympia, you need to get a paper map about quarterly, several times a year. It's got all the, from antiques to xylophones, a map of Olympia, financial district. You use barcodes, you use apps, you know where to find stuff. Also, make it more easily for people to contribute to whatever cause they want via text or whatever. So make it easy for people to contribute money to your city. And, yeah, I got an audit coming up. I feel I'm being targeted. I've been in here over five years, and I come from the east coast, northern Virginia, and one day, the air turned to liquid glue ammonia. And I live near 15039 Braddock Road, Centerville, Virginia. My parents live at 15027 Braddock Road, Centerville, Virginia, near Starry Night. It's western Fairfax County, where they spent hundreds of millions of dollars on high-tech, United States government buildings, entities, a couple hundred million dollars worth of stuff. And, yeah, the air turned to liquid glue ammonia, and I haven't been left alone. So I've been illegally medicated, and I have been harassed by law enforcement since 1977, and it's definitely accelerated in the past couple months in Olympia. I know they want to take my picture, but when they kind of creep up and, you know, snap my picture, whatever, I can handle all that stuff. My main concern is I've got an audit coming up on the 27th of October. And, yeah, I'm at 915-4596, 1360-915-4596. I just want to get some backing. I'm a good guy. I've got no criminal record. I've returned wallets and gold cards that I find on the street and everything like that. So I appreciate all the help that Olympia's given me. I'm on Section 8 Housing, and hopefully, I can relieve some stress and make it through this audit, to say the least. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mr. Burgess. Is there anyone else that would like to comment this evening? Anyone else? Public comment is closed, and I will turn now to council response. Councilmember responses or questions. Councilmember Rogers?
Well, Jeanette, it's always a pleasure to see you. I wasn't going to respond because I was going to allow that for Steve Langer. Three quick things. The petition for Carol Person, I have no problem signing that. I appreciate that you include downtown. A lot of people forget that downtown is also a neighborhood. And as far as half a mile, quite frankly, I wouldn't even mind putting it, putting the distance greater than that. Steve Welliger, Needles. Two weeks ago, I attended Olympia Downtown Association meeting, and Needles did come up. Bill McGregor, who's a port commissioner, he was saying how more Needles are being found on the port property. As a matter of fact, they found some that are in the lookout tower just outside Anthony's. And one of the people pointed out, "Well, what happens if you have a five-year-old kid who's walking with his or her parents, goes up in the tower ahead of the parents, falls there, touches it, whatever?" It's not like that's, that is unheard of. It is a huge concern. That was something that came out very strongly at the meeting, that it's, the downtown's being overwhelmed with Needles, and living in the East Side neighborhood, I know it's not just downtown. After the meeting, I was talking with someone, and you did mention Eggy Hop or an organization that's, I think, affiliated with it. I don't know if this is true, but what I heard is that Eggy Hop handles, hands out 800 Needles daily on average and collects 300 Needles daily on average. So that means every five, every day, we've got 500 Needles that are out there, and where are they going? An exchange, I can appreciate, but I'd like that exchange to be one-to-one, not three-to-one. We do have, you know, we want to help certain populations, but not at the expense of several others, namely, children and even our own staff. A couple of years ago, we had a scare. One of our staff members was taking out the garbage from a can and pricked his hand with a needle. So adequate, proper disposal is an absolute. Another thing I want to mention, it's related, but it is talking about the low-barrier shelter issue. We have a person who is running for Olympia City Council, Mike Vols. He owns a business and a building in downtown, and he's spoken out against the low-barrier shelter. About two, three weekends ago, his windows were damaged, and he called the cops wanting to know, you know, was this an isolated event, or did this happen to a whole bunch of businesses that weekend? As it turns out, his building was the only one that had damage that weekend. I have a lot of concern with that one. This is not the first time this has happened, this kind of retaliation. It happened to Brian Kolb. And that's thousands of dollars. Those windows are not cheap. Someone owes both of them, as far as I'm concerned, a huge apology and a big check to go with it. Insurance isn't cheap. People have their policies canceled. This will drive businesses out of downtown. Let's see. One other point with this shelter in being downtown, because that's what's now being proposed by Interfaith Works, is we have tried something like this before. Bread and Roses used to be located around downtown, and it created quite a bit of a problem. Surrounding business owners did have building damage, Needles, and Excrement, among some other things. So I hope that this council does take this into account, our support of the low-barrier shelter, the problems it can impose, as well as the fact that, another thing I learned at that Olympia Downtown Association meeting two weeks ago was that Connie Lorenz reported out that six business owners have already said that they're going to be moving out of downtown once their leases expire. So can we accommodate this type of development? What's going to happen? How many more people are going to move out of downtown if this goes through? And that's the reality we need to face. It's not just about, it's not just about being generous and wanting to help people. It's about how many we can help, where we can help them. And I do agree with Jeff Jaxich. Thank you for pointing that out, and I hope your suggestions include those issues. Thank you.
Further councilmember comment, questions or response? Mayor Pro Tem Jones?
So I want to thank Stephen Welliger for coming and speaking with us this evening. I want to acknowledge that indeed there is a problem in Olympia with heroin and heroin use. I think it's also important to put that in context, that this is both a regional and a national problem as well, that we're not facing this alone. We are looking for strategies to deal with the situation. I think your coming and highlighting it this evening is useful and helpful to us, and we are wrestling with this problem along with many others. It's a serious problem that needs to be addressed. So thank you for coming and talking with us.
Councilmember Rowe, followed by Councilmember Langer.
Well, I have two questions or comments. One, with regard to Jeanette Huck or Dickinson's comments about the park, the private park on the west side. Could staff please explain if we have any role at all in terms of private parks and the benches and how it looks?
We don't have a role in terms of a standard-type role, depending upon what type of development they may or may not need to get a permit, and then there would be a role for review. But there isn't a role in terms of determining what it should look like or not look like if it's a private park.
So I guess, how do we address the issue that I understand what she's saying when, if it's, I was just up there yesterday and looked around, and I think it looks pretty nice right now, but the point is, come winter, if it is church pews that have been painted, they will deteriorate, and I, I'm not sure how we respond to her concerns about, could we, could it go to parks? I mean, what do we do?
I think we'd have to watch and see what happens, and then if there are concerns, it's something that could be referred to land use to determine whether or not we want to add some additional requirements or standards.
Okay. I just wanted to follow up on it and get some, maybe potential future guidelines on private parks and what could and could, should be allowed, and, but it's wonderful that the park is there. It's great, but we do need to make sure that it remains a lovely park. So, secondly, I wanted to thank Stephen Welliver for coming forward tonight with regard to the heroin issue and children. It takes tremendous courage to come up and talk to the It takes tremendous courage to come up and talk to the council and be on TV and especially about an issue like that. We, we hear from the homeless advocates quite often and in a very vocal manner and it's not very often that we hear from the community. So I really appreciate hearing a parent have the courage to come up and say it as it is. We have a heroin issue in Olympia. We do. We have a needle issue in Olympia. I was at an unnamed restaurant this weekend and they said that somebody had put their, um, foot in the garbage can to smash down the garbage and got the needle jammed up the side of their leg. And it takes several months to determine whether you have contracted something or not. And I just hope as a council, we can really move forward, especially in our budget process of getting, funding back into the Thurston County Narcotics Squad and getting, really taking this seriously. It's suddenly out of control and I, I have some real issues about, I know it's good to hand out the clean needles, but what are we doing in our city to help prevent addiction and help these people get off of herin, heroin? What are we doing in this society that in our, that people are getting more and more addicted and we have all of these nonprofit programs? But I don't know. I think maybe could staff tell us, give us a definition of the different needle exchanges in Olympia and a summary of who does what, why, what's the follow-up with people? I mean, is it truly just handing out needles? Like, um, I think you read about the Iggy Hop statement. Is it handing out needles and just saying, here's a clean needle? Or is it truly, are there other programs that are trying to assist people to get off of the drugs? Because at this point, I feel like we're enabling people to stay on the heroin and, um, that's not going to help the city of Olympia at all. So I would just ask that, could we possibly get more reliable information on the facts from our police department, the narcotics squad, the different nonprofits? What are we doing in Olympia with regard to this heroin use and the needle exchange? And, and let the public know. We don't want people afraid to go in the parks. We don't want families afraid to step on, their kid to step on a needle. And we don't want our workers downtown pushing a garbage can down with their foot and slamming a needle into their legs. So I really feel like it's, it's getting out of hand and I, I hope that as a city we can move forward and, and really tackle this and, um, get some correct information as well from the, um, from our staff. So thank you to all of you for speaking up tonight.
Councilmember Langer.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Buckswell. First of all, I do appreciate Stephen, was it Welliger?
Welliver.
Welliver, okay. I wasn't, didn't quite hear that. Coming forward with the needle problem. I guess the concern I have is that it's easy to be really reactive to these things and I think we need to make sure that whatever it is that we do works. So, because I, I think that we, in the past, have done a lot of things that haven't been very effective. So I want to make sure that whatever we do is something that actually makes a difference. Certainly the needle exchange was established for a good reason, but I certainly, because that prevents the passing on of diseases from addict to addict, uh, from other needle users. But I do also agree that having an exchange means actually an exchange where somebody gives you a used needle, they get a, they get a fresh needle, an unused needle, so that we don't have the needles all over town. I think that is, I agree that that's a big problem. And there is a certain role that the city has in dealing with this problem and there is a role that other agencies and other, um, other, like for example, the state of Washington has in dealing with this. And I, and we can't get into a situation where we start providing services and things that we simply don't have the capacity to do. So we have to be really smart about how we approach this issue from our perspective and the part that we can do something about. I know that right now, that the whole west coast is flooded with cheap heroin and it's certainly showing up in Olympia and, and in fact, Seattle has this problem, Portland has this problem, Tacoma has this problem. These, these are all, all over the I-5 corridor. There are huge problems with, with lots of heroin being out there and being inexpensive and very available. So I think we need to be careful in, in how we do this so that we spend our very limited resources wisely. In terms of the, um, what Jeff Jaxich talked about, about priority for children and Carol Person, I'd be happy to talk to you about this after, after the meeting or some other time. And, um, and it's, and I think, and I appreciate actually councilmember Rowe's questions to the staff about standards for parks because she, basically, I, we got, uh, an answer so far for kind of how we should approach this. And, um, I do agree that we should look, look at these kinds of issues and see what, what our role is, but make sure that we do what, again, what makes sense and, and what we have authority to do, since it is, after all, private property, it's not public property.
Councilmember Hankins.
Thank you. I want to thank everybody who came forward tonight because I think it's, you're doing us a great service because you're explaining and illustrating to the public that there is not a single problem downtown. There are multiple different problems. And as much as we want there to be a magic bullet that solves it all, there aren't, there isn't one. And I, and I've known that and it really hit home to me last Thursday night when I did a ride along with the Olympia Police Department. What you read about in the paper Friday night, um, I was standing on the periphery of the night, the night before from midnight, from eight to midnight downtown, um, getting to see firsthand. And it really, even though I know that, I'm not naive about what's going on downtown, it's a totally different perspective when you're in that moment. And there's a heroin problem, there's all kinds of issues. And again, one answer isn't going to be, is not going to solve all of them. And the reason it's important is that we come together and understand that and that we start working together. We need to have a conversation, and I know I say that all the time, but it's the only way we're going to do something different in this community and make a difference. But we need to bring together the neighborhoods, the downtown association, the business owners downtown, the police department, the, the social services providers. It's only then with the city, with all the people who live here, that's when we're going to have those honest conversations and deal with heroin. And that's going to take a different solution. Deal with homeless and that's going to take a different solution. Deal with, are the travelers, that's a different solution. We have to use all our resources and we have to use them wisely and we're not going to do that until we start coming together. We all know there's a problem. We can all agree on that. And now we have to figure out how we all have a play, a piece that we can put into this puzzle to help solve the problem and work towards a solution. So thank you for bringing it forward and, um, I look forward to working with all of you so that we actually do start looking and really addressing these issues.
Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor Buckswell. Um, so really quick, um, I thank you, um, sorry, I lost your name. It was Stephen for the comments around the needles. It's, it's a very big issue, as I stated last week after we had those comments. A couple of thoughts. The first thought is the Thurston County Solid Waste Plan is out for public comment right now. And a comment to add needle exchange and needle cleanup, cleanup to the solid waste plan would be helpful in that process. So if we can do that as individuals, that, I think that would help. They have some ideas, but needing to tap into that solid waste funding that the county has available from other sources is, is, has to be in the plan first. The second thing I would say is that maybe, um, it sounds like people are pretty passionate. Maybe there's a place down the road for a, a study session with our police department and, um, public health and social services around the needle exchange and, and prevalence of drug abuse in our, in our community. It'll be eye-opening for you, I'm sure.
Mayor Pro Tem Jones.
I would ask that we just move forward and schedule that study session if you pass it to agenda setting.
Is that of interest to council? Okay, let me clarify what, uh, what the focus of the study session is. And, um, if council will permit me, I'll just make a brief comment on that issue myself. I, uh, I think this is a very important conversation to have. One of the things that I have repeatedly done in the last three years in conversations with constituents is let people know how many needles are exchanged in this community each year. We have had a dramatic rise this year in terms of distribution. I do appreciate the comments, uh, that we've shared tonight. It is a, uh, a social issue that reaches far beyond the city of Olympia and it is a regional issue. And in our state, the county health board, which is, uh, our three county commissioners, um, has primary responsibility for, uh, health and they do receive resources for the needle exchange program, which has been a valuable program historically, uh, in essence, essentially to help protect our public safety. The intent of the program was to keep needles out of the playgrounds and other places. So this is an important conversation to have in a comprehensive way. I, uh, I think it, it's something that we should, um, consider including the county on directly, uh, and specifically the county health department. Um, I would ask for a little bit of latitude at this point in terms of, uh, perhaps some scoping on the part of staff with county health department and, uh, particularly, uh, our police department and the sheriff's department. We have some near-term issues to address regarding our budget and our participation in the narcotics task force. And certainly I'd like to, uh, expedite those conversations in the context of the budget, but perhaps at this point, we could ask for some scoping on the part of staff and a recommendation back about how we might frame a study session, uh, before we just simply schedule it. And I just, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Jones, I, I know you're asking for something to be put on the calendar right away. I'm sensitive to the, the complexity of the issue and trying to sort of prioritize what parts of it are, we can bite off piece by piece. First, in the context of our budget. Second, in terms of who the right partners are to have at the table. So would scoping be acceptable as a first step? Mayor Pro Tem Jones.
I think that's a reasonable response, but I would also point out that I, I don't think that this is a discussion that's going to conclude with one study session. I think this is a, a long-term undertaking that's going to take a concerted effort.
Very good. Councilmember Rowe.
I think we should just, we should go ahead and schedule something, uh, like councilmember Cooper was suggesting and, and get the ball rolling and, and it could lead into further discussions down the road. But I'd really like to, to get some factual information that we can get out to the public. It just feels like it's really escalated and the public is anxious to hear as well. So even if it's just some facts that we could hear from the police, um, we don't, it, I don't know that it has to, how extensive it needs to be, but just an update on, um, that we could have in the more near term.
Very good. So I'm, I'm hearing a request for a fact-based approach to an initial work session, uh, specific to needle exchange and heroin. Councilmember Rogers.
I actually agree with both of you wanting to schedule this, but also scope it carefully. I'd like to know what other cities have done to solve this problem and also in the interim, make sure that we're sending out the message to anyone who does a needle exchange that we want a one-to-one exchange. To me, that's a priority. I know, I, from what I've heard, it's our police department, they're, they're getting overwhelmed with this. They're getting overwhelmed with calls, complaint calls about the needles and that seems to be something that could at least alleviate the problem in the near term.
Councilmember Rowe.
And also with, with other cities, if, if they have, um, um, needles on wheels, so to speak, uh, the Iggy Hop takes it around town, the needles. I, I'm wondering if other cities have one spot in town? Like everyone would know there's one spot in Olympia that you can go to for a needle exchange and not have it potentially throughout the town. So I'd like to know what other cities do in terms of the actual needle exchange location and if, if others also have them around town or one location, that type of information.
Do we have a, I'm just going to look at staff at this point. Do you have enough to?
We have plenty to work on. We, we are not in this business of needle exchange or public health or correcting IV drug use. We are in the business of unfortunately dealing with needles and arresting people who sell heroin. So most of what you've asked, we'll have to ask others for who can bring forward what's happening. So we have plenty to work on. Thanks.
Great. So, um, and again, I, I appreciate the clarity of city manager's response in terms of, I mean, our primary partner in this endeavor is, uh, the health department and, and the county. And I appreciate staff's willingness to, um, provide some facts to, for us to start working on. Councilmember Langer.
Yes, thank you. I just, I, I guess I want to sort of add one piece, which is that, you know, I think as you pointed out, there's a certain role that the city has, but I think that it's important that we are part of a comprehensive, I don't know, solution might be too optimistic a word, but at least a comprehensive plan for dealing with it. And, and I guess the more we can get ourselves aligned with other players who have a role in this, the better, rather than just reacting without getting all the resources to bear on this issue in a way where we're more likely to make a difference.
Mayor Pro Tem Jones.
So I'd like to take the, the discussion just a little bit different direction. I'd, I'd like to reflect and echo some of the comments that I heard councilmember Hanger, Hankins, excuse me, Hankins address earlier. There are a number of different issues that are facing our community. Many of those are focused in our downtown area. They spill over into other areas and I think that, um, it is easy to blur some lines and I, I, these are complex issues and they also are multifaceted. We are dealing with people who are destitute. We are people, dealing with people, um, who have mental health issues. We are dealing with people, uh, who have a variety of problems, addictions, uh, for each individual, there is a set of problems that has a community impact. And I, I would just like to remind all of us that there is a distinction in the response to someone who is destitute than there is to someone who is addicted, to someone who is, uh, carrying out criminal behaviors. These are, these are different actions and behaviors that require a different response. And I think that often in our conversation, we blur those lines and it's very easy to, to group people together. So I would ask that we try to be clear about which problems we're trying to address and which strategies we're using in, in that process. Thank you.
Okay. So, um, obviously there's a lot of pieces to this conversation and, uh, we won't be able to satisfactorily deal with it, it, just in response to public comment this evening. But I appreciate the interest expressed and it, we, we have some next steps that we'll take in order to have a more substantive conversation, uh, about the issue of both needle exchange and, uh, drug addiction and particularly heroin in our community. So I want to move us forward. I do want my opportunity to just, um, make one additional response to public comment this evening. And I want to speak to the, uh, the park on the corner of Harrison and Division, which is a private parcel. And, uh, I just want to make sure that we don't leave out one important part of the story related to that part, related to that private park. It is a private parcel. However, there is a high level of neighborhood engagement in that, uh, piece of property. And there actually has been historically a high level of neighborhood engagement in the use of- the use of that property. So I don't want to leave this discussion without honoring and recognizing that we have a very active neighborhood association, which 27 years ago I used to be a member of, that has had a long conversation about how to use that property in the best interest for the neighborhood. So whenever the city talks about standards and policies and practices, I think that's a part of our process of communicating and working directly with the neighbors and the neighborhood of concern. And I believe actually, right now, this very minute, there is a discussion happening in the West Side Neighborhood Association about the use of that property. And I want to honor the work of the neighborhood in charting their own destiny and doing planning that's appropriate, in appropriate scale to that area of our city. So with that, I'm looking to my colleagues and going to move beyond public comment. Is that okay? All right. So I'm going to take us to the consent calendar. Before I ask for a motion for tonight's consent calendar, I want to remind council that item 4K, which was the appropriation ordinance for the Washington Center for the Performing Arts, has been moved to other business and is no longer a part of tonight's consent calendar. So with that noted, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I move adoption of the consent calendar.
Second.
It's been moved by Mayor Protem Jones and seconded by Councilmember Hankins to approve tonight's consent calendar minus item 4K. Is there any councilmember comment, questions, or polls regarding our consent calendar? Councilmember Langer?
I just have a quick comment. I just wanted to commend city staff on getting the property acquisition as part of the West Bay sidewalk project going. I'm really excited about that finally happening. I'm really pleased that we're moving forward so that hopefully we'll be on schedule for 2014 to actually have a sidewalk along there where people aren't risking life and limb to walk along. So I think that's really exciting, and especially with some of the public art that'll go there. I think it'll be a real addition, positive addition to the community.
Excellent. Any further comments, questions, or polls by councilmembers? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the consent calendar minus item K, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Our consent calendar is approved, which takes us to new business, and it is new, new business item 6A, which is appropriation ordinance for the Washington Center for the Performing Arts. Just very briefly, before I ask our city manager to summarize the staff report on this particular issue, I do want to acknowledge that earlier this evening, the finance committee met and unanimously agreed to recommend to council approval of the request by the Washington Center to have available up to $200,000 of the endowment for the Washington Center for the Performing Arts. The city manager will enumerate a little bit more specifically about how that money is both proposed to be accessed and proposed to be available to the center. But I did want to note that finance committee has met with the center, actually two different finance committee meetings, and we were pleased to make a recommendation to the full council, which we can further discuss after our short introduction by our city manager to the issue.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will be brief. This item, as you said, is coming to you from the finance committee. The request is for the Washington Center for the Performing Arts to be able to use $200,000 from the endowment for the Washington Center for the Performing Arts to supplement its operating budget for the next performance year. To go back in history, the endowment was set up for the Washington Center almost 25 years ago for purposes including maintenance and operations and repairs. So the endowment is a credible source for helping the Washington Center deal with financial concerns. The very last attachment to your staff report tonight shows the funding history for the city of Olympia to the Washington Center. We have traditionally given the Washington Center operations two kinds of support. We've given them half of our lodging tax each year, plus we've given them interest earnings on the endowment itself. If you look at the last five or six years of history, the financial problems that have been created are similar to the financial problems many of us saw during the recession. At an all-time high in 2008 and 2009, the city was providing the Washington Center between $385,000 and $361,000 a year. When the great recession hit, that dipped to $250,000 in 2010, $260,000 in 2012, and $254,000 this year. So that you can see that the city's contribution to operating the center has dropped about $130,000 a year for the past four years. So the center has come forward three times to ask the council to use money from the endowment to stabilize their operation. The first two times were more of a crisis mode, where the center didn't believe it could make operating expenses meet their revenues. This time is different. The center is, has created a new strategic direction. Attached to your staff report is a plan for them to stay in the black. They have changed the way that they do business to reflect the new economic reality. The plan also includes a plan to pay off all their debt, restore their operating reserves, and restore their equipment replacement reserves. So our money will be used to sustain their operations while they work to make the Washington Center operations healthier in this new economic climate. If council approves this tonight, we will set up an account that the Washington Center may draw on for legitimate expenses to help them make sure that they're creating a platform for financial success for the future. Think those are the highlights with that. I'd be happy to entertain any questions you have.
Questions for Steve first. Councilmember Rogers?
Steve might not be the best one to answer this, but I guess he can. So this is three years in a row, three of my four years on the council, we've been confronted with this. And I remember the first time back in 2011, we had some very upset councilmembers. Believe it or not, I was not one of them. And one of them actually said, let's let the arts center go dark, not to give the money at all. And another one made a point that this is not an endowment. When you say the word "endowment," you think of something, someone who's really, really wealthy, and they're dumping in millions of dollars out of their own personal pockets, and God bless. But this is tax dollars. This isn't an endowment. This 1.5 million we have left, those are tax dollars. When we sold off a property in southwest Olympia, we took that money and put it into an account and told the Washington Performing Arts Center that we would subsidize them with the interest, which we have been doing every year. This is subsidized. And it's not, it's not just ours. This is a regional agreement. So another point that was brought up in 2011 is that are we the only ones that are chipping in? So how much has Lacey given? Has the Washington Performing Arts Center gone to the city of Lacey and asked them to sell one of their city-owned properties and put that money into an account, and then subsidize the Washington Performing Arts Center with the interest off that? Have they asked Tom Water that or the county that? Are we the only ones? Because this is regional. And it's not fair, based on our agreement, that Olympia's taxpayers be the only ones flipping this bill. Something else that was mentioned back in 2011 is that we were told some of the acts that were, that were booked were, let's say, great if you were someone who is enjoying artistic rarity. And some of the words I heard were like Mexican yodeling, Mandarin pantomime, sumo tap dancing, but they don't necessarily sell a lot of tickets. And the message was more Lion King. It might be pedestrian, but it sells tickets. So that's something I'd like to know. Are they going more pedestrian where they're going to be selling more tickets? And Craig Adavelli at that time, he also asked, his, one of his biggest concerns were, will the Washington Performing Arts Center come back year after year after year? And he was right. That's exactly what's happened. This is now three years in a row. I'd like to know that. What has the Washington Performing Arts Center done based on that 2011 initial discussion? Because that, that opened the door. Have they had a gala? That's one of the things that one of our councilmembers recommended. What about their fundraising efforts? Bake sale? That was even mentioned. Because we, we can't just keep affording to shell out money. These are taxpayer dollars. And so those are some of the questions that I would like to hear about, based on that 2011 initial discussion.
Mr. City Manager?
Thank you. I can answer some of those questions, and maybe other members of the council who are liaison to the Washington Center Board can answer more. In answer to your first question, yes, the center has received money in the past from Lacey, Tom Water, and the county, and has requested some. I can't tell you what those levels are now. The center is not only a performing arts center, it also provides a home for 28 different artistic partners, many of whom are in Olympia, but some are from Lacey and Tom Water, and that's the basis for them asking and requesting money. Although Lacey and Tom Water have traditionally contributed less, they have contributed to the Washington Center. And the center board has asked them, those jurisdictions, to increase their contributions. I don't know the status of those requests. Have they gone to more pedestrian shows, more commonly known? What I understand from reading their strategic plan and talking to them is they're going for shows that maybe aren't so risky. Some of the shows are very high cost and potentially high payoff. They're going to a more steady performance that has maybe lower initial costs but has more guaranteed revenue. So I think it achieves the same result, is to take a less risk in the performances and programming that they offer. I don't know about the ones that you mentioned, whether those are still on the list. I do know sometimes it's hard to predict. One of their most successful shows last year, they had twice, was some sort of animal frisbee thing. It was dogs catching frisbees, and it sold out wildly twice in a row. So I don't try and predict their business, but they are trying to put on shows that are more assured of success. They have included in the strategic plan, you have benchmarking for where they stand now with regard to some of their ticket sales, their private sponsorships, their corporate sponsorships, where they are now and where they're planning to be. I do know that in the last six months, they've secured a $75,000 corporate sponsorship from Puget Sound Energy. I do know that they held a fundraising breakfast last, actually earlier this year, where they netted, I believe, $37,000, $47,000. So they are doing some fundraising events as well. So those are some of the things that I'm aware of that they're doing to address council's concerns. And just for the record, the center has asked us for money three out of the last four years, but they skipped last year, didn't ask us for money last year. So there was two years, skipped a year, and are back for the 2013, 2014 year. That's what I know.
Thank you. I, Councilmember Rowe? And I just want to acknowledge that Councilmember Rowe is also our liaison currently to the Washington Center.
Yes. So just by coincidence, I did have a meeting with George La Mercier, who is the board chair, as well as Jill Barnes, who's the new executive director, and a handful of board directors. And it was tea time with Jill Barnes, which actually was not tea, but it was a great meeting where we were splitting the meetings with half the board and the other half to meet with Jill to specifically talk about the future and the fundraising efforts moving forward. It has been a really rough three years that they have gone through, and they've had transitions in, well, almost their entire staff. And so I think having this, a new director on board, Jill Barnes is great with the renovation of the building, it's adding some much-needed fresh approach to the entire center. And they were brainstorming about different fundraising ideas yesterday at the meeting, and everyone is signing up to take part in this. And our official board meeting will be on Thursday. Well, we'll be talking about it more, but this was just a mini-meeting yesterday. But I can tell you that it is very heartfelt that they want to raise money, get the, the center financially stable. I'm sure it's hard for them to come back and ask for this money, but they need to right now. They're at a place where they need to do this. And so I think that eventually, they won't have to do this anymore. They're, the ideas that they're coming up with, reaching out to schools, I'll have more to report next week when we actually have our meeting, but Jill has come forward with many ideas from her previous job about doing outreach, education outreach to the kids in the community that then will just get the message to their parents to come, come, come to the, to the center. And I didn't know what you meant by more pedestrian, but you're meaning just more people-friendly events? Is that what you're saying?
Something that would sell more.
Right. So they are, like as Steve was saying, that they have changed all of that. They have, well, Jill will be the one now helping to pick the, the performances. Staff did pick this upcoming year, she wasn't on board yet, but they came up with a great variety. And I know that they are trying to reach out to a variety of ages as well, and bring in some fresh blood, so to speak, to get everyone involved in, or at least, you know, come to a couple shows this year and find out what it's all about. So I really do have to give them a plug that they are working hard at revamping, and here's the little sheet of, from yesterday, that I was going to give up my report tonight, but that's pretty much it. And I, I really do think that they're moving strong, strongly in the direction of being financially solvent.
Mayor Protem Jones?
So I just want to speak on behalf of my experience with the finance committee, and I want to thank Councilmember Rogers actually for raising this issue, because I think this is a serious concern, that they are back again asking for more funds. And I think that members of the finance committee have been quite concerned about the financial position of the center and its relationship with the city, and what we can do to help them get, again, on a platform for financial success for the future. What I can report to you is that the Washington Center has been incredibly responsive to every question that we've asked, every response that we have asked for has been fulfilled. They have revamped their strategic plan. They have opened their, their budget to us and stepped through it. They have established priority initiatives on how they're going to get back on track, and they have changed their operating procedures significantly. So it is in that context that the finance committee, at least speaking for myself, is able to come forward and make this recommendation, that this is a good investment, and that this organization is working closely with us to bring things to a new point. I think that it, that the finances require that we take that hard look at it. And if you've not already, I would encourage you to take a look at the materials that were made available to the finance committee, again, strategic plan, budget, and priority initiatives on how to reposition this organization for the future. So I'm supportive of this action, but it's only after quite a bit of hard work, both on the part of the finance committee and particularly on the part of the Washington Center, to bring us to this point.
Councilmember Cooper?
Thank you, Mayor Buckspahn. So also echo Mayor Protem Jones. It's my understanding, even prior to my membership to the finance committee, that the Washington Center has been meeting on a regular basis with our finance committee from, for four years. And, and to me, they've, three years. They've demonstrated a significant change in their ability to put that organization out into the community. They have brought on a new director that has a experience in fundraising and marketing a center like this, and I'm fully confident that this is the little boost they need to put that organization on the, on the firm and sound footing that it needs to really grow, and, and to quote our visitor and convention bureau executive director, "put more butts in seats." And I think they're going to do a great job doing that with the leadership of the, of the new executive director and the board. So for that reason, I'll support this, this recommendation of the finance committee.
Councilmember Rogers? Councilmember Rogers.
I do appreciate their efforts. I have every intention of voting against this one, though. Because of their efforts, that's why I'm okay with continuing our current funding with subsidizing as we have been. But this is going above and beyond, and I'd like to get those numbers. What has, what have Lacey and Tumwater and the county given before we go and shell out another $200,000? We, we only have so much money. And we're talking about homeless, wanting to help them, that costs money. Our park system costs money. And then just regular city operations, our roads cost money. This money in this, what I'm not going to call an endowment, but an account fund, we could change our ordinances and we could redirect that money. These are tax dollars. So I'd like to see the other city step up. And congratulations to them for making these efforts, I do appreciate it. And that's why we should continue giving what we normally give, but not this extra. The other cities can pick it up.
Okay. I appreciate the discussion. For my part on the Finance Committee, I also want to address some of the questions that have been raised this evening. I do appreciate the work that the Washington Center Board has undertaken over the last three years of our very concentrated engagement with them to help me, help and also be a good partner in getting them through incredibly hard times. This has been a tough recession, particularly for the scope and scale of this kind of a performance house. It is an important part of Olympia's downtown. It is something that this city has, I think rightfully, invested in significantly to restore and rehabilitate. And I'm excited about the upcoming renovation work, coming to closure, and giving us an opportunity to have what I think will be a wonderful new start for our Center. I'm impressed with what the Board has brought forward in their strategic plan. They've given us a specific set of performance objectives, including more than doubling their outreach to regional community organizations and governments. They have targeted a specific number of increases of scheduled performances by artistic partners. They have really clear fundraising goals, and these are things that we can check back in with them about over the next year. At this point in time, the ordinance that is under consideration tonight for first reading allows them to have access up to $200,000. It's not a blank check, it's something that they would be coming to us for on an as-needed basis, to do things like pay off very high debt that, in the past, they've had to incur debt that is at a high interest rate for essential needs. This would give them the opportunity to come to the city first, rather than going into a high-interest market situation of meeting emergent or urgent needs. I think this is the right thing to do at this time, and it does give us a good jumpstart. And I want to, again, express to council the unanimous recommendation on the part of the Finance Committee and staff was to move to approve the ordinance on first reading and forward it to second reading. And I would ask if there's a motion.
So moved, second.
Been moved by Councilmember Rowe and seconded by Councilmember Hankins to move to approve the ordinance, providing access to the Washington Center for performing arts to up to $200,000, as explained in the staff report and the ordinance, approve on first reading and forward to second reading. Is there any further discussion? Mayor Protem Jones.
Just very quickly, I just want to express my appreciation for having moved this off of consent agenda and having had an opportunity to air concerns and the status of this proposal.
Thank you. Councilmember Hankins.
I just want to say, after reading their strategic business plan and looking at their strategies and their measurable outcomes, I think we're there on a solid footing after talking to the staff, personally talking to them and finding out what their season's looking like and how they're working together as, as our staff has come together to really work together under Jill, I think we are on a really good footing and have a really bright future. And also, the VCB just had something come through that in January, there will be another event at the Washington Center. Because of this bright future, we have events coming to Olympia, and so that's really important to remember, too.
Councilmember Langer.
I was one of those people who was really unhappy with having to give money to the Washington Center at a time when it seemed like they were going down and we were just saving, we were just helping them to survive. I think it makes sense right now, since we did support them and prevented them from disappearing, that we help them now to get back on their feet with a clear expectation, as is outlined in the proposal, that they pay back that money. So I think that's something to keep in mind. We're not just giving them the money, we're actually asking them, we're actually telling them to pay it back, and they're giving us a plan on how to do that. I have confidence in Jill Barnes and in the reorganization, and I will be voting for this motion.
Very good. With no further comment, I call the question. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and opposed.
Nay.
Motion carries with Councilmember Rogers voting opposed. That takes us to our new business item B, which is the naming of the park at the Artesian Well Site. And I believe we've got Dave Okerlund, and I believe we've also have Jim Neeland from the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. So Dave, you want to start us off?
Yes, ready to go.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Dave Okerlund. I'm the Planning and Design Manager for the Olympia Parks Arts and Recreation Department. Tonight, council has the opportunity to approve a name for a new park, the park at the Artesian Well Site. The naming process begins with the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, whose role is to solicit public input of names, and then to make a recommendation to council. With me tonight, I have Jim Neeland, who's the Vice Chair of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, and he is going to come up and briefly explain what the process was and what their name recommendation is. Jim.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I always like to come up and talk with you guys, it's always nice. Anyway, tonight, we're going to be discussing the process we went through to come up with a new name. And briefly, on August 6th, we opened opportunity for the public to recommend or suggest names for the park. And notification was sent to neighborhood associations, property owners within a 300-foot radius of the Argentine, of the Well Site. It was also released to media radio through news releases by staff. The Artesian Well public meeting attendees that had come to some of the earlier meetings were all sent a letter notifying them that there'd be an opportunity to recommend or suggest a, a name. The organizations like H2O, Ole, and others that have been very much supporters of development of the Artesian Well Site were all notified. It also appeared on the city website, and information on how to submit a proposal for a name was also posted at the information board at the well. We asked people to submit names along with a reason for that name, and also give us their name and contact, so they were not just anonymous suggestions. On the, on, just last week, week ago, we had a hearing at our PrAC meeting over at Olympia Center, and that was an opportunity for anyone that had not previously submitted a proposal to come forward through public testimony and, and suggest a name at that time. So we had one person show up to testify at the, at that meeting. The most recently, we presented a name recommendation from PrAC to the general government meeting here this last week. So, the name. On the evening of September 5th was when we held the public hearing over at the Olympia Center. A total of 23 name suggestions were received. And from all those various methods, staff took those names, actually compiled them into a list, which PrAC members were able to read ahead of time. And of particular interest, of course, was the reasoning behind each of those names. At the, after the hearing, and before deliberations started, Article 2, naming of parks from the City of Olympia ordinances, was reviewed to make sure that any names that were being considered by PrAC met the ordinance requirements. Through that process, and through deliberations, PrAC chose the name to bring on to you of Artesian Commons. And we had a lot of, I think, very good names, recommendations, but the name Commons was the one that really stuck and kind of struck a chord with the PrAC members. And I think you've been passed out a little definition of what Commons means, but I'll read it here just for everyone's benefit. And this is actually from Webster's Dictionary. Commons, belonging to, shared by, or applying equally. Belonging or related to the community as a whole. Commons, a section of land belonging to or used by a community as a whole, or a structure or room for dining. Other definitions for Commons include belonging to, shared by, or applying to all. And when this was suggested, and actually the definition looked at, it seemed to fit very well with the concept of having a small park where people would join together, as well as coming there to fill their water containers, as many of you have already done and seen done. So we thought that this would fit very well. The other advantage of having just a two-word name, and this was actually something supported during the public testimony, was to have a short name and not something that was three or four words long, because it seemed like a concise name would probably fit better. And in talking to staff, they felt, too, that having a more compact name also would benefit them in terms of just physically getting the name on to signage at the site. So that is the recommendation that we bring to you, is Artesian Commons. Any questions?
Before going to general questions, I'd just like to hear from our Chair of the General Government Committee first, if that's okay.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank Jim and the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee for the thorough job that you did. I know it's very difficult to choose a name, it can become emotional and sometimes a little divided, so I'm glad you guys get to do all that groundwork and come up with a suggestion for us. Initially, at the general government meeting, I, I was surprised by the one you chose, Commons. It's not a very common term, so to speak. So I had said, you know, what is the definition? So I'm really so pleased that you brought this, because now that I see this, it is perfect. It's, it's perfect because what we're trying to do is make it an area for all, and a space for everyone in downtown, and not just one group, and not just another, but really the one sentence saying belonging to, shared by, or applying to all, which is perfect. So I'm, I'm very pleased with the, the choice, and I want to thank you again for the work that the committee put into making this decision. So thank you.
Thank you, on behalf of the committee.
Councilmember Langer, followed by Mayor Protem Jones.
I'm also in favor of this name. I think it's a good choice. It's, it's short, it's to the point, it addresses what's there, both in terms of the, you know, what we hope that everybody will be using it, as well as that the Artesian Well is there. In the recommendations, there were a number of, for names, there were a number of, of names associated, people's names associated with, with the well. And although I agree with you that we, I think we should not include that in the official name of the, of the area, I would encourage the PrAC to look at perhaps having some kind of signage about the history of the Artesian Well, not only, you know, the, the Union Depot, but also the, you know, the folks who really started this, like Herb Blague and Mr. Robinson. And so I think, I think we have room to honor those who helped keep that, and Jim Ingersoll, too, actually, he wouldn't put his name up there, but I think he's a big part of this as well. So there's a number of people who've been associated with saving the well, and then bringing us up to, and, you know, Ole, H2O, and so on. And I'd love to have some kind of explanatory sign there, showing people how big an F community effort it was to make this thing happen. So even though I agree that we shouldn't have those names in the official name of the park, I think we should find a way to honor those folks who put in so much effort to make this thing happen. If we have some kind of sign, or explaining that near the well site, I think that would be a really positive addition and a way to take care of some of those, you know, really good suggestions by community members.
Mayor Protem Jones.
So I like the name, too, but I also had the opportunity, as, as your liaison to Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, to watch the process. And first of all, the, the public providing 23 candidate names, there was active participation by our community. There's interest in, in this park and its development and, and how it moves forward. But also, there was, there was good deliberation and conversation within PrAC about the naming of the well, the site, the park. And actually, they, they came through quite a bit of discussion relatively quickly, in my mind, to, to settle on this name. And I just also want to acknowledge, Councilmember Langer, that your idea of incorporating some of the history of the Well Site and the players that, that brought it about and allowed this to happen, actually was part of PrAC's conversation. And they felt that that was an important part of telling the story of why this exists in our downtown and how important it is to our community and what it's taken to bring this about. So, Jim, thanks for your report.
Well, thank you very much.
Appreciate that, and job well done.
Okay. No one else?
Okay. So the decision before us is to accept that both the General Government Committee's recommendation and the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee's recommendation to name the park at the Artesian Well Site, the Artesian Commons. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Rowe and seconded by Councilmember Jones. No. Oh, excuse me.
Cooper.
Councilmember Cooper. I had the councilmember part, right? Okay, so, any, everybody understand the motion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you to Parks, Arts, and Recreation Committee. I know you folks do a lot of hard work, and I appreciate your investment in our community and our community's heritage, so thank you. And also thanks to the General Government Committee. Okay, so with that, we move to new business item C, which is our Shoreline Master Program, continuing deliberations. And we're gonna just give Keith Staley, our Director of Community Planning and Development, a moment to set up, something that he's very well practiced at doing at this point with this particular issue. And Keith, if I understand, you're gonna take us first through a decision point that was left over from our last meeting that concerned the shoreline master plan, and then we are gonna go through a series of clarifying issues to make sure that we tidy things up to the satisfaction of both council and staff. So I'll give it to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We are here this evening to talk about the Shoreline Master Program. I'm certainly here to answer any questions that you might have. My assumption is that unless we talk about the item, unless we revise the item in the master plan that's been presented to you this evening, that it goes forward to October 1st in the, hopefully, in the final draft that we approve this evening. So what I'm going to do is I'm gonna run through eight decision points that I think are relevant to clarifying the document and to bringing us to, hopefully, a final decision on October 1st. Certainly, if council needs additional deliberations, that is definitely your call. But our hope is to move forward and bring back a final document on October 1st. So, without further ado, the first question that was left unresolved from our August 27th meeting was in regards to the industrial and/light industrial uses in the water-dependent category and within the marine recreation shoreline environmental district, whether they should be conditional or permitted uses. There was some question as to, so what are water-dependent industrial uses? Some are listed here on the slide, including marine construction, dismantling and repair of marine-related items, terminal and transfer facilities for marine commerce and industry, water intakes and outfalls, tug and barge facilities, and log booming. So, moving on, I'm assuming you want me to run through all of them and then we'll come back and deal with them.
Actually...
What's your pleasure?
I, I would, I think, let's take them one at a time.
All right.
Is that okay with council? Okay. I think it'll feel good to make steady progress and move forward through the evening.
Very good.
And I, on this particular item, Keith, I don't know if you have more to add, but I do want to call attention to the Port of Olympia's communication.
Yes, sir.
And I just want to acknowledge that we had essentially a government-to-government clarification, a request to just clarify some points from the port district, which is our government entity partner in activities out on the port. And I will just call attention that that has been received by council this evening with some additional clarification from the port's perspective about this particular issue. I'm not gonna go further than that if there's questions and, questions or comments on this particular issue. I do want to start by making sure that there are any questions, that we have an opportunity to get clarification from Keith at this point, or any member of staff, including our council, about the issue that's before us. Councilmember Langer.
Well, I think, Keith, it might be helpful to explain the Ps, Xs, and Cs for the audience before we proceed.
Certainly, gladly, thank you. The P is a permitted use. The X is a prohibited use, and the C is a conditional use. And conditional use basically means that it has to go through a public hearing process that ultimately is reviewed by our hearing examiner and then approved by the Department of Ecology.
Very good. Mayor Protem Jones.
And Keith, also, just a clarification, there is another category related to boating and boating facilities that is not considered industrial or light industrial.
That is correct.
Okay.
In Table 6.1.
Okay. Thank you.
I will just point out, we deliberated on this issue. We had a split vote at the last council deliberation on the issue. And I, you know, I will, you know, without prejudice, accept any motion that anybody wants to bring forward. I do want to give people an opportunity to express, you know, their perspectives in terms of for or against. I'd like the opportunity to do that first, but I'd like to open this up to council members. And I do want to acknowledge that Councilmember Rowe wasn't able to attend the meeting that we did have this discussion.
I'd just like to request, I'd like to, if we can, hear from both sides, because I was absent and I have to admit, I did not watch the full six-hour meeting as I had the stomach flu. And I, so I would appreciate hearing from both sides.
A certainly reasonable invitation. I'm happy to start with a comment, if that can get the ball rolling. I'm seeing general nods. So, again, this is a request for, to allow, well, it's a, I'm sorry, let me rephrase this. The, the decision before us is regarding the marine recreation area, which is Area 5C, otherwise known as Swan Town. And the decision before us is to, whether or not to allow industrial and light industrial activities to be permitted if they are water-dependent. And from my perspective, the fact that something would be water-dependent, it seems that it would be an appropriate fit for the marine recreation reach, and specifically the area of 5C of Swan Town. So I think that allowing this to simply be a permitted allowance rather than a conditional use allowance is reasonable, given the designation of the reach and the definition of water-dependent. And I'd certainly honor other, I would encourage other perspectives to be shared. Mayor Protem Jones.
So, I don't know that I can speak for the other view, but I can speak for my own view. So again, the question that's before us is not whether these uses can occur in this area or not, but it's what process the proponent needs to go through in order to achieve that. And I also want to recognize the correspondence and the ongoing relationship that we've had with the Port of Olympia, not just on this particular reach, but throughout the entire shoreline discussion and process. I think that we've had good discussion and a good partnership in looking at shorelines, and particularly those that directly affect the port. I also want to remind council and those listening that part of the council's wrestling with this particular item had to do with our inability to really visualize what a light industrial or industrial, a water-dependent use was. I remember council turned to staff and asked for help with this question. What is a water-dependent industrial use if it's not boating? And so the input from the port and also the more recent staff work is very helpful, I think, in informing this discussion. So my own opinion on this, for this particular reach, which we have identified as marine recreation and is designated primarily as a marina for recreational use, is not an appropriate site for the type of marine construction, tug and barge facilities, and log booming, which has been brought forward to us as the definition of what we're looking at. Not appropriate without a type of permit and public hearing process that a conditional use provides. So again, we're not, we're not disallowing these uses, but we are putting some protections on their approval, that they need to go through a review process if we were to go with a conditional use approach. And so, and I'm speaking in favor of that then. Thank you.
Helpful clarification on a couple of points in terms of the process. So, Councilmember Rogers, followed by Councilmember Langer, I think. Is that, I'm not sure.
Yes.
Okay.
What I like about the conditional use is getting back to process. We all know that the port property is a hot-button issue and that they've been sued quite a few times. I don't know how many. Probably not as many as us, so they shouldn't be complaining, should they? But what I'm hoping is that the conditional use could stem off some of those lawsuits with a permitted use, if it's straight-up permitted. If they meet the qualifications that are gonna be, that would be listed out, then it's an up or down. Is it permitted or isn't it? And it doesn't, we wouldn't have as much wiggle room unless we were to, let's say, make a special request of the port, which they could say yes or no. In which case, maybe then we're gonna, we'll have people that are gonna say, then we have to sue. That's the only way we're gonna stop this permitted use. As opposed to conditional, I'd like to be able to give people some leeway, some greater input in this hot-button area, so that we can avoid conflict as opposed to create it.
Councilmember Langer.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Boxbaum. So I've sort of, I've debated this issue with myself for some time here, since we made our decisions. And, you know, in the letter that the port sent us, they had provided a list of standard industrial classifications that they would hope to have permitted in this, in the marine recreation area. That included shipbuilding and repairing, which Swan Town Boat Works is already doing, towing and tugboat services, I'm not so sure about that one, but marinas. So for example, there's the planned expansion of the marina. It's already, the, they've already done the digging out of the sediment below to allow that. Water transportation services, which certainly I think would be good. Sporting and recreational goods and supplies, gasoline service stations, like potential fueling dock, boat dealers' pumps and pumping equipment, and sports and athletic goods. And so I think those are all things that I actually wouldn't have a problem with. However, I would have a problem with something like having tug and barge facilities and log booming in that area. So as a result of my sort of going back and forth on what I thought might be a good idea, I'm actually with the Mayor Protem of going with the conditional use, so that it is, that means that those things can be permitted, but they have to go through a review process to make sure that they fit in with the other businesses that are there, and that they're not inconsistent with some of the uses. So for example, I would find a log booming facility pretty inconsistent with the planned marina area that they have. So at this point, I think I'm going to go for the conditional use permit, because it does not exclude it, but it just needs to go through further review to make sure that those uses that are appropriate for that area are permitted, but those that would be inconsistent, that there would be some hurdles that they would have to jump over to make sure that some of the things that may not be a good fit would get a review that would consider if it's appropriate for them to be there or not.
Very good. Further discussion in, before I go to the Mayor Protem, does anybody else want to plug in first, Councilmember Hankins?
I just want a clarification. A fueling dock, wouldn't they have to get a conditional use permit anyway for that?
The fueling dock would be in the aquatic designation anyway, so it's not really following in this particular discussion.
Okay.
Yes, they would have...
Yeah, it would be.
So thanks for the question. Mayor Protem Jones.
Yeah, and just a clarification, some of those things which are standard classifications in the correspondence from the port, I believe would fit into this reach, but would be classified as a boating activity rather than an industrial activity, given the definitions that we've had up to this point. So I guess what I'm trying to say is some of the things that the port is suggesting they would like to do in this reach, I believe they could do. For example, they list a marina. I believe that we've provided for that as a permitted use.
And I'm just pointing at council to see if there's any clarification.
Yeah, I guess one thing that's important to remember, that even if it's a permitted use, it still needs to go through a hearing process. So by saying it's a permitted use doesn't mean that somebody has an outright opportunity. They still need to get a shoreline substantial development permit. They still have to meet all the requirements of the SMA and of our local program. So the conditional use permit process is an additional level of review, but by saying it's permitted, it doesn't mean that it's automatically okay. They still have to go through a, the same general type of a hearing and a permit process with a hearing examiner to get a substantial development permit. And if you had another option, if you had certain uses, as Councilmember Langer indicated that you're very concerned about, you could say water-dependent uses are permitted, except certain uses would need a conditional use permit. You wouldn't, so there's different ways to kind of, you know, slice it if you really wanted to go that way.
Right. So, Councilmember Rowe.
I was just wanting to say that I agree with Councilmember Langer, that this list, to me, looked fine, but then again, looking at the list from Keith, I agree that it's not things that I would want to see down there. So, can you tell me again, Keith, on the list, is there anything on here that isn't permitted? I mean, can, they can go ahead and do all of these, things are okay, right?
Which list are you referring to?
The latter, from the Bill McGregor.
It would depend on, again, as Tom indicated, they have to go through and get a substantial development permit. They have to demonstrate that there are no impacts, or if there are impacts, that those impacts are mitigated. So it would depend. They would have to get approval.
But like a boat dealer? I thought that was something that was okay.
That would be a commercial, a commercial use. Commercial uses are, let's see here, or water-related in the marine recreation are a conditional use.
So I... So, I don't mean to drag this out, but I'm just curious.
No, you needed to go one more column, and it's a permitted use.
Yes, permitted, sorry.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah. I empathize with, it's hard to draw these lines because of these activities and we, I guess, and I can appreciate arguments on both sides here. What we're trying to do is ensure that we have a truly beautiful area of our waterfront. And, again, just to speak on the other side, I want to balance that with, I'm trying to look for ways to ensure that it's a beautiful area of the waterfront and it's also vibrant and that there isn't going to be a competitive disadvantage to small-scale businesses that can provide amenities to make the area interesting and exciting. So, it's a, I see the argument on both sides. I do want to reinforce that a permitted use, it's not like it just happens like that. It has to meet the conditions that were outlined by our city attorney. There is still process. The question really, it's this very challenging thing. Do we want to have that additional protection? And does it act, so my question is, does it act as a disincentive to some things that, like the paddleboard company, that I think are an attractive addition to that area? Does that, is that going to automatically be a disincentive? And that facility still needs to go through a permitting process. So, the question is finding that right balance. And I want to emphasize, it's not like there's a perfect answer here. I appreciate us being able to just represent both sides and what we're trying to balance because we're certainly after the same thing, which is a beautiful area of our waterfront. Councilmember Langer.
Well, I must say, I pretty much agree with everything you've said. So, and I actually like Mr. Morrell's clarification about that we can say that certain things we don't want or that, well, that we don't want without a conditional use permit, to be more precise. And so, I guess the concern I have is sort of with large-scale industrial processes, that's the kind of thing that I think would be inappropriate in that area. And I would like to see us have, having a conditional use permit for those uses. So, I think that might be a good way to kind of, to kind of get what we want in a way that also helps us to make sure that any other uses that they would have to go through a more stringent set of criteria to make sure that they meet our expectations about the marine recreational, marine recreation designation.
Mayor Protem Jones.
So, I agree that this is confusing to folks. For example, the paddleboard company is not a water-dependent use and so is not a good example of what we're talking about. And I would suggest that you look at the definition in our code, which has been provided to you and by staff tonight, as to those types of uses which we're discussing.
I have another clarifying question. Because it's a water-dependent use, that means they don't have the setback, correct?
Potentially, yes.
So, then that paddleboard company, if they're building paddleboards, are right there on the water instead of being 50 feet back, correct?
If we defined it as a water-dependent use, that would be correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and I do want to acknowledge that I have confused this issue and the mayor pro tem Jones has been very clear and accurate in pointing out that the paddleboard example was not a good one. So, the issue here, and it's helpful for us to keep each other on track. So, I do think, I mean, part of the challenge here, again, is, I mean, just going to the list that has been accurately provided by staff, there are some of those things that I still find compelling as being characteristic and desirable for what we've defined as a maritime, our marine recreation area. And it's a matter of the details. And it's, so, it's whether or not, as Councilmember Langer was saying, is it, might it be possible for us to tease out some things that if they were excluded, like, I don't want log booming there? That's not consistent with what I believe we have been talking about in terms of marine recreation. That mean, the whole point of defining the reach as marine recreation was, you know, to focus this on creating a very successful, vibrant, and exciting marina area. So, are there some things that, and actually, the irony here, I mean, as we navigate our way through this, I, you know, I know in some circumstances, a tug activity is an important thing for a marina. I mean, given the boats that are there. So, and marine construction, I mean, I like the idea of having boat building there. I think that's an exciting proposition and I'd like to be competitive and attract that. So, it's sort of the devil is in the details. Mayor Protem Jones.
Once again, we're not talking about whether we're permitting these activities or not. We're talking about what level of process is involved in allowing them to move forward and what level of review.
Good, good clarification. Councilmember Langer.
So, I'd just like to get back to my point about sort of large-scale industrial uses and I think that's something that is inappropriate and, or at least needs to be reviewed very carefully, shall we say, because we have to decide if it's appropriate or not. But I think if we require a higher level, a higher standard to be met. So, I would encourage us to sort out those things that, in that category, have them be conditional use permits if we are going to allow things there to happen and then have the rest of it be permitted. Maybe that's kind of our way out of this dilemma. So, I don't know. It just, I should actually ask Keith here, are we, is that, does that give you enough to work with?
No, no, I think we need.
It would require me to come back with the, on the first, with the revised language. Certainly, we have a couple of lists here. You could look at those lists and identify which uses you're comfortable with, which uses you're not, and add something such as, uses that are similar to those uses would require a conditional use permit, those that are.
And it, it, well, Tom, did you have some?
I think it would be very difficult to start with something as broad as large-scale industrial.
Right.
So, I thought you had just one or two. Or, yeah, I may have started us down a path that's too difficult. If you want to go and try to describe a general area, I think that's going to be very difficult.
Councilmember Langer.
Okay, so, let me offer, then, that we should take log booming and terminal and transfer facilities for marine commerce and industry as conditional use and the rest of them be considered permitted. I mean, I'm sorry, did I say log booming?
Yes. And are you comfortable in framing a motion?
Okay, well, I would like to move that we have, in the marine recreation area, conditional use permits required for log booming, terminal and transfer facilities for marine commerce and industries, and have the other uses as listed in water-dependent uses industrial be considered permitted.
Is there a second?
You've skipped log booming.
Oh, did I skip?
No, you included log booming. So, I want to clarify, log booming was included. Okay.
Was not, was conditional.
It was conditional.
Yes. Yes, thank you. I know, it's hard to keep track of all these things.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and I, any discussion or request for clarification on the motion?
Can you clarify?
And, Mayor Protem Jones.
Well, you might suspect, I intend to speak against and vote against this motion. My own opinion is that something as significant as marine construction, which is a building activity, an ongoing construction activity, is an industrial use that needs careful consideration and review and should be beyond our standard process for permitted uses and should be conditional. And my own opinion is that that is the case for, frankly, all of the uses on this list. The only one which I might step away from would be water intakes and outfalls because I see them as passive and perhaps not even visible. But these other activities, in my mind, are large industrial activities and have an impact on both the natural and the social environment at a level that we need to have a greater level of review. So, we may have a difference of opinion on how we should move forward.
Councilmember Rogers.
Well, you both make such great points. So, would you be amenable to modifying your motion to put all of those under conditional use except water intakes and outfalls make that permitted?
Councilmember Langer, I'd also like to speak to this, but please.
Yes, go ahead. Why don't you go ahead and also? Think while you're doing it.
So, just in terms of clarification, again, we're talking about things that are water-dependent. So, it's marine construction, that's water-dependent. It's dismantling and repair, that's water-dependent. And in terms of the permitting process, these things have to be justified and vetted according to our permitting processes to fit those definitions. And I, you know, I'm just going to take the side for the sake of argument because, again, I'm looking for marine recreation area that is vibrant and has got stuff happening. So, that I'm, I'm, I would just say, let's try an up or down on this and not tamper with it. But council, I've got Councilmember Langer and Councilmember Rogers.
Yeah, yes, thank you. My turn?
Yes.
Okay. So, I understand the concerns of Mayor Protem Jones and I actually agree that these things should be evaluated carefully before they're put in place. However, I believe that, I mean, my understanding is that even though they are permitted, there will be, they will be scrutinized and it isn't just sort of an automatic pass on these things. So, I believe that there are certain ways in which it makes sense to say we need a higher standard than a standard that already reviews these things and where there's already public input and where there's a hearings examiner process. So, I would suggest that we, that, I guess I'm, to answer Councilmember Rogers' suggestion, I'm, I think I'll stick with my motion and see what happens at this point.
Councilmember Rogers.
Real fast, I, despite seconding that motion, your motion, I do plan on voting against it as is. I wouldn't mind the adjustment, trying to reach a compromise between you and Nathaniel. If this vote does fail, doesn't pass, then I'm assuming that we're all good with having it be conditional use. Well, maybe not all of us, but the majority of us would be good with the whole list being conditional use. So, I call the vote.
Very good. Does everybody understand the motion? Keith, are you clear?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
It'd be worthwhile to restate the motion, please.
Councilmember Langer, would you like to restate the motion?
Good luck.
Keith, did you, did you write it down, I hope?
I did not write it down, but I understood the motion to be that you would allow, in the marine recreation shoreline environmental designation, you would allow as a permitted use all of the listed uses that are on the slide, with the exception of water transfer, terminal and transfer facilities for marine commerce and industry, and log booming. Those would both be conditional uses. All other uses, water-dependent, light industrial or industrial uses would be a permitted use in that environmental designation.
Thank you.
Any further questions for clarification? Okay, then I would ask, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And aye, and all those opposed.
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, I believe the motion fails with Councilmember Cooper, Langer, and Buxbaum voting for. And Mary, is that, is that clear enough? Okay, so, we have a failed motion. I'm interested in another motion. Mayor Protem Jones, if that's okay.
I move that water-dependent industrial uses in the marine recreational designation be conditional use permits.
Second.
Second.
I think that was taken by Councilmember Rogers. So, it's been moved by Mayor Protem Jones, seconded by Councilmember Rogers. Any clarification needed? And, you know, and I'm, I'm saying uncle on this one, so I'm going to vote for the motion. And let's move us on, hopefully. So, unless there's discussion or request for clarification, Keith, are you okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay. So, Councilmember Cooper votes opposed and the motion carries. So, thanks for the deliberation. And, you know, I, challenging stuff. So, one down. Seven to go. Let's.
Yes, sir.
Keep paddling.
I'm rowing, rowing on. The next item is stormwater manual compliance. We've had a lot of discussion about the relationship of stormwater and stormwater improvements and how we can facilitate and encourage greater stormwater compliance within the shoreline jurisdiction. The suggestion is to add policies to our SMP that would encourage the city to continue to look for opportunities to address existing development, redevelopment, and new development within the shoreline jurisdiction to comply with the stormwater manual and best management practices. Happy to answer any questions about this language. It's pretty straightforward.
And Keith, just a quick question for the sake of the council. How often do we revisit our stormwater treatment manual?
We are actually in the process of doing that right now. We are actually in the process of doing that right now. Council will likely see those updated regulations in 2016. There's a fairly lengthy process we're going through. But I received an email from Andy Hob that we're literally just getting started with that process and moving in that direction. So it is definitely something that is on the work plan, and we are underway and moving in that direction.
Okay, so for my own part, I just want to reinforce that I believe that this is consistent with our environmental objectives the urban portions of our shoreline. That in fact, this is probably one of the ways that we can most significantly impact environmental or water quality in Bud Inlet. So I think this is a good thing. Councilmember Langer?
Yeah, just, there's a typo in there in the 2.3, second line, and measures to encourage existing development.
Thank you.
But otherwise, I'm in favor of doing this.
Okay. Any further elaboration, or are we good with this? Can we do this by general consent? Okay.
I just want to add that with this change, one other thing that we're going to do is go through and make sure that all of the references to the stormwater manual are consistent because we have two different ways sometimes we refer to it. So that's just a cleanup. I just wanted you to know that we're going to also do that.
Yes, in the next draft, you'll see this entitled drainage manual. It's our, it's the drainage manual.
That was a solid splash forward. Very good. Next one.
Number three, other regulations. There was a suggestion to amend and provide additional clarifying language in this section. That language is included in, strike out and underline. I'd be happy to answer any questions regarding this additional language.
We good? Okay.
Thank you. Item number four.
Olympic-class swimming at this point.
Yes, we're moving along swimmingly. Item number four, there were questions in regards to the critical areas and the inclusion of the West Bay Drive master plan in, as one of the adopted regulations. Former council member Hawkins indicates that my ordinance reference is probably incorrect, and she is absolutely right, that it was definitely adopted after 1995, so I'll have to go back and check that. But the suggestion here is to include the West Bay regulations relating to height and view blockage in the shoreline master program in the same manner that we've included the critical areas ordinance. If we were to amend those regulations, it would require approval, review and approval by the Department of Ecology. And with the exception of clarifying the adoption date there, I hope we can move forward with this proposal.
Questions, concerns? We all on board here? Okay.
All right.
Very good.
This one probably reads a little confusingly, and rightly so. Basically, what happened here is we put the E in the wrong place. And what I'm suggesting is we put it in the right place so that it references the correct section, which would be A through D, not A through F, and that it would become new item E in Section 1834, 496.
Okay, good substantive editing. So we're ready to dive into the next one?
Yes. Here we go.
I'm working on them.
There were requests to clarify our discussion about provision of setbacks. Oh, I'm sorry. There we go. There were requests to clarify the table 6.3 and its relationship to the incentives in 1834, 620. It was unclear in our last discussion whether it was council's intention to allow reductions from 30 feet in the case of the urban intensity to zero feet without complying with the standards that are enumerated in Section 1834, 621 through 8. The suggestion is to strike that language so that you move from 30-foot setback to a zero-foot setback for a water-dependent use within the reaches 3A, 4, 5A, and capital 6. And there would be no incentives required to make that movement.
Questions, clarification? Councilmember Hankins?
But you would still have to meet all the requirements.
Certainly. You have to go through the normal mitigation sequencing process, the substantial development permit. You just don't automatically have the incentives applying. You'd still have to do mitigation if there were impacts.
We good? Okay. Anchors away.
Steaming forward. Yes, table 6.3 in relationship to reach 6A. There was a suggestion that this table needed clarification in regards to its relationship with non-water-dependent uses. They do require 100-foot setback, that's been indicated. And also that for water-dependent uses, they would have the ability to go to zero feet, although it would be fairly difficult in this because there is an intervening street. So I'm not sure. Recommend, language as proposed.
Good to go. The ship seems to be leaving the dock here.
I'm all on board.
Oh, good.
All right.
Okay, so in that case.
Last question.
Yep, go for it.
Yes, sir. At the August 27 meeting, there was discussion by city council about designating the area west of West Bay Drive in the urban intensity shoreline environmental designation, as you can see here on the map, the affected area. As you move south, you can see that there is different impacts of that decision. And staff wanted to be clear that council was cognitive, cognizant of those impacts and that we were correctly following your direction. Option A is to simply move down the center line of the roadway from Braun South down to the roundabout, and that all of the properties to the west of West Bay Drive would be in urban intensity. Those to the east would be in the urban conservancy, and that's highlighted there on the map. The B alternative, again, going from Braun South to the roundabout would be to those areas that are not within the park, that they would, that the parallel designation would occur at the ordinary high water mark or along the shoreline. So just looking for council clarification, whether or not it would be A, which is basically down the center, using the center line of the roadway, or B, which is recognizing the existing development in the south end of that reach.
So this one requires a little bit of discussion. And council members have the map. And I think it's helpful to use the map and look at the A and B on the screen, Keith, if you don't mind switching back to the language. So we're choosing between, and this was part of our deliberation. In my own recollection, and I may be mistaken about this, but there was actually more deliberation about this, the meeting before last, rather than the last meeting. And so there was discussion, and Keith is very appropriately just making sure that we're clear about what our intent is. So I want to make sure first, folks have a fix on what the question is, what the different options are. And there's an option to state a preference here and see if we have consensus and agreement. If there's doubt, we can frame this as a motion to take a vote. But does anybody want to speak, one way or another, on this issue? Mayor Protam Jones?
So my recollection is that there has been discussion about this and that the August 27 meeting, the known as the marathon meeting, we agreed to those properties lying to the west of West Bay Drive would be urban intensity, and those lying to the east would be identified as urban conservancy. And I'm supportive of that earlier decision.
Okay, which is option A. other statements? Are we in concurrence? Councilmember Rogers?
I actually have a question, because I do remember us discussing that. So why is this item reappearing?
It's really
I was unclear as to what council's direction was in this particular area.
And this is, this was one area of contention that it's fair for staff to just ask and make sure that, and this was certainly one that we did get comments about, there is existing development there. What this means is if we go with option A, there, this is, there's, this reach is completely built out. So the existing development would fall under our language for what's currently grandfathered in. So it's grandfathered uses along this, essentially along this ridge, as it's defined here. there, if I'm not mistaken, Keith, there's a question regarding consistency because of the discussion that related to the northern portion of reach 3B. So it was, and which is why this is being represented to us here. The, it's a matter of making sure that we're making a conscious decision and not doing something that is inconsistent with the parallel designation that was created for the northern portion of 3B. Mayor Protam Jones?
So I also want to recognize that there may be reason for staff to have not gotten clear direction from us. At the end of that marathon process, we left the language in item B as it's, generally as it's presented here. And so we didn't deal with specific wording changes or language changes like we did in much of the other work we did that night. We simply said, made this split on West Bay Drive. So I can understand why staff is bringing this back and making sure that what our intent truly is.
Okay, are we in agreement? Is there general consensus on this? Not? With A? Any? Okay. I see general agreement. I want to look to our city attorney. Do you have any questions?
I just want to make sure that we're using the right terminology.
Okay.
On one, we use waterfront recreation, and another, we're using water, the conservancy. So Keith, did you, you want to clarify which phrase we should be using?
Yes, I'm sorry. I noted on the slide here that was urban conservancy. It is in fact waterfront recreation.
Yeah, thanks for the clarification.
So we're just using West Bay Drive as the boundary?
that's the last issue, I believe, right?
Yes, sir.
So Keith, would you run through next steps?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I'm on board with that one. And next step's pretty straightforward. We will bring back a revised document for your consideration on October 1st. There will be a resolution approving that document and directing staff to transmit the record and the shoreline master program, together with the checklist, to the Department of Ecology. Staff will endeavor to do that sometime in the month of November. I suspect it'll take us about a month to get that record completely assembled, the checklist complete and ready to go. We'll pack that off to Ecology. It typically takes them about three months to review the submittal to ensure that it's complete. Once they determine that the package is complete, they will notify us and start their own public hearing or public consideration process. They may or may not hold a public hearing. I think it's likely that they will. The Department of Ecology's review process is pretty straightforward. They will, once they determine that we have a complete application, they'll provide local government with a, they'll provide everybody with an opportunity to comment on the proposal. They will collect those comments, and they will direct them back to us to respond to those comments. If there is significant policy clarification, we'll bring those back to you. Otherwise, that would occur at a staff-to-staff level. After we've responded to those comments, Ecology prepares a decision packet. They publish that. They may or may not, again, hold public hearings. And then they make a decision. They can do one of three things. They can approve the SMP as, they can suggest amendments, or they can deny it. If they approve it or deny it, then there's an opportunity for appeal. And then finally, they work with local governments to finalize the process. It should take somewhere between six months and a year for that. So if we transmit it to them in November, we likely would see it back again sometime September, perhaps of 2014.
Any, Mayor Protam Jones?
So if I understand, we're transmitting the entire record to Ecology?
Yes.
Does the City of Olympia have a vehicle that's large enough to do that?
We'll rent one.
All right.
It'll have to leave from the marine terminal because it's going to be a barge. I'm going to move us towards a motion here in a moment, but our city attorney has his finger raised.
Yes, I just want to, one additional clarif- Bay Drive, we actually will bring back a specific, you know, against, so what my proposal would be, we would use the center line of West Bay Drive. Just want to make sure that that's what we would be using unless there was something else. You kind of have to have a specific point, and that's usually the easiest one to use, so.
Sounds swimmingly professional. Yes. Okay. So we good? I'm stretching it now. So in that case, in order to complete our work this evening, I would accept a motion to approve the September 17, 2013 draft of the Shoreline Master Program, subject to the revisions adopted by City Council this evening, and direct staff to prepare a resolution for council approval on October 1st, 2013, approving the draft and directing staff to transmit the Shoreline Master Plan and other required documentation to the Department of Ecology for their review. Is there a motion?
So moved, and it's wordy enough that it just seems appropriate for what we've just accomplished.
Hey, I'm working on--
I'm pleased to second that motion.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Langer and seconded by Mayor Protam Jones. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I resisted saying aye-aye, but, okay. All right. Keith, thank you. And thank you to all of our staff that have worked on this so hard. It's not over until it's over. We are still learning as we go through this process, and there's more to come. So I will move to council member reports. And I'll go for Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor Bucksbaum. Just one quick item to report. This last week, I attended the Olympic Regional Clean Air Agency, and it was actually a pretty solid meeting. We increased our budget by around $560,000 to include a grant from the Department of Ecology to work with the University of Washington to study ultrafine particles on the northern Olympic Peninsula. So in a very short, non-scientific nutshell, that's to study particles that are smaller than are regulated by the federal government, so we can begin to get a handle on the true impacts to public health that are caused by woody biomass plants that are going online in that area. Also, that increased funding from the Department of Ecology for the Thurston County Wood Stove Replacement Program. So if you know anyone that has a wood stove, the Clean Air Agency has a really good program in Thurston County to help you get a credit and a rebate to replace that wood stove with the central heat pump or a gas stove. So it's pretty significant. And then the last thing, we had, it was actually a joint meeting with the Thurston County Board of Health, and we looked at the history of outdoor burning in Thurston County. And we had had a complaint a few months back from a resident outside of the urban growth area in South County. Right now, in Washington State, there's no outdoor burning, residential outdoor burning allowed in towns, cities, or urban growth areas. So the only place in our county that residential burning is allowed is in the rural county that's not in urban growth. So we heard a proposal from the staff to institute fees for residential burning, and then phase out residential burning by 2019 in Thurston County. So to me, that was an exciting proposal. And then the Thurston County Board of Health is going to go back and digest that proposal, see what they think, what kind of questions they have, whether they want to run their own public process, before making a recommendation to the Clean Air Agency Board, who is the authority on this decision in Thurston County. So I'm happy to answer questions if that was confusing. I tried to keep it concise.
Questions for Councilmember Cooper. Councilmember Rowe.
Question with regard to the burning. Is it legal for people to have an outdoor fireplace?
So outdoor recreational fires are legal everywhere except for Olympia, Lacey, and Tumwater.
Even if it's a fireplace? Because I'm seeing newer homes built with outdoor fireplaces attached to their homes on the patio.
I don't know. The description of recreational, we were given was more like those--
Fire pits?
Pits and the cone-shaped things. But I'll check in on attached, because that may be different.
Yeah, if you could double-check, because I thought in newer homes, they were adding these fancy fireplaces that are attached to the home, and therefore they're legal.
Just one comment, if they're gas, they're legal. They're okay if they're gas.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, versus wood, being illegal.
Well, maybe, could you check?
I will, definitely.
Councilmember Langer.
So are among ultrafine particulates also diesel exhaust? Is that part of the issue? Is it all about wood burning?
No, the ultrafine will get to things other than wood burning in biomass plants. Every kind of emissions has ultrafine particles, as I understand it. They're just not regulated or very well. There's not very much science around them. And so this will be a study that will really lead the nation in the ability to establish what impacts we are facing, especially in Port Angeles and Squim, and Port Townsend, around those biomass plants that are online there.
Okay. So the reason I ask is I was curious about all the log trucks that pass through Olympia and the particulates that they leave behind, and if we can look at the impact of that, I mean, not in particular, but sort of see what kind of impacts diesel exhaust might have on, you know, people's health. Because my understanding is that there is an impact.
Yeah, I'll ask Dr. Hadley to send me, she's our senior monitoring specialist. I'll ask her to send me a note, the response to that. The quick pieces is we do monitor that, and in fact, we've installed a black carbon monitor in a couple of our locations in the region to really look at vehicle exhaust in certain locations. But I'll get you some more information in a minute.
I'd appreciate it. Thanks. Mayor Protam Jones.
And I should also say that ORCA does not regulate moving sources, so we don't have any regulatory authority over vehicles.
Only when they're at stop signs?
Well, no, only, the only time that would be included would be in like a ship situation where they're docked and on shore power.
Right, thank you. I was kidding.
I'm sorry.
Mayor Protam Jones.
So I was just going to come back to the recreational outdoor fireplaces and Olympia's code on that. I was going to turn to staff. My understanding is that if there's food preparation involved, whether it's gas or charcoal, that it is allowed. Is that correct?
We think so, yes. We can check, but we believe so, if there's food involved.
I believe so, yeah.
Great. Good report. Any further questions for Councilmember Cooper? Councilmember Rogers.
I have one quick thing to report, and just to let you know, I did miss this meeting last week because I was sick with that cold, and it was the 7:00 AM Wednesday evil, evil, morning meeting. And I was keeping my fingers crossed that I was going to be able to make it, but I was feeling horrible. Anyway, it doesn't look like I missed much, although there is one that's of, for me, of really particular interest, and that's the Rails update, the rail plan. So just to let you know, there is one going on where WashDOT is reviewing options, and they are separating out, say, heavy rail from mid to light. And they're also having some problems as far as what rails are available, which ones will accommodate what? Like the medium-sized rails are the most versatile, obviously. They can go on the heavy rail as well as the light. But light industrial, or I'm sorry, light rail, they're somewhat limited. So this is going to be a big work in progress, and there is an upcoming meeting open to the public. Shoot. And I sent an email to a friend of mine about it, and I'll try to get that information to you.
I believe it's October 4 in Centralia.
October 4?
I believe so.
Okay, yeah, that, I don't know if anyone wants to make the drive down there, but I think it'll be fairly interesting. And there was a minor adjustment to their RTP, Regional Transportation Plan. WashDOT asked for four additional items to be placed. It has to be approved by TRPC. That's not, that's not really a big deal. It's not going to change the money scheme, and that should be coming Nathaniel's way. And that's it.
Questions for Councilmember Rogers? Councilmember Langer?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Bucksbaum. I have a very brief report. I had a lot Clean Water Alliance meeting on September 11th, and we toured the new primary sedimentation basins, which was actually quite interesting. They're sort of monsters compared to the ones we've had up until this point, and will provide us with, I think, much better ability to deal with especially really big rain events, so that we don't end up spilling over into Bud Inlet. It really takes care of a major bottleneck that we've had in our sewage treatment system. So it's exciting to see that they're being tested. There was just water in them, so it actually smelled fairly pleasant there for the time being. But they actually also have some significant odor control covers over the basins, so that unlike the current basins where they're uncovered and you can definitely smell the ammonia in the building. In fact, it's pretty corrosive to the equipment in the area, that the new ones actually have aluminum covers over the liquid, so that it should be much less of a problem, and also provide much more odor control in terms of the surrounding area. We also, other sort of issues of note, we talked about the draft framework for the groundwater recharge study, and talked about the sort of what we will be studying and won't be studying, because clearly these are huge issues, and will not be able to do all of it. But at least, I think we came to a conclusion of being able to provide enough information to make some good policy decisions. And then we also directed the staff on the peer review panel selection process, and actually, I'm really excited about that. There are some, we've been able to attract some really top-notch folks who are interested in being on the peer review panel, and those invitations will be going out to the panel members, and hopefully we'll get the folks that we've asked for. So I'm actually really excited about having some very highly qualified national and international experts on, in the field of looking at groundwater recharge and looking at the chemicals of concern, that we aren't sure what they'll do, but we all have some really great folks looking at that and seeing what, how we should proceed in terms of groundwater recharge. So that's all I have.
Questions for Councilmember Langer? Councilman Burrow?
Thank you, Mayor Bucksbaum. So I attended the Parking Business Improvement Area meeting on September 12th, and we had recently at General Government, a very lengthy update from our ambassador program, Heather Moore and Rob Richards. And it was really, I thought, quite well done. They went, they went for a full hour with the year in summary. So what they did at the PBIA was a mini version of that update, which was very informative. The PBIA has been quite involved in financing their new outfits, their hats, you know, the cleaning gear, so they are quite invested in the program. In addition, Rob Richards spoke to the Downtown Neighborhood Association, becoming a, indeed an association again, and they call themselves the DNA. And he, they are working hard at updating their bylaws and guidelines, and trying to get a functioning Downtown Neighborhood Association up to speed and meeting again. And also, the ODA and PBIA are having a facilitated meeting with Kendra Dolan, well, actually, I guess that was on Monday, to just talk about how the two groups can build stronger relationships and work together. And, let's see, I just want to welcome the new Goodwill store on Capitol Way. The store, it was, I think it was just called Blue, and I went in today and wrote a note on the back of my business card thanking them for their coming to Olympia. That is what we decided that council members, for all of us, we need to welcome these stores and appreciate them. We're having their business in downtown Olympia. They really need our support right now to stay put. They have to stay. Also, on September 25th, at 10:00 AM, is, for those who can attend, Danny is the last of the remaining initial ambassadors that was hired, and he has been able to move on now to a much better position, one that he's been training for, and he's very excited. So Rob said it's bittersweet. He's a great worker, but he has an opportunity now to have, I think it's a job with the health benefits, and so it's pretty exciting for him. That will be September 25th at 10:00 AM in the council chambers, if anyone is around that would like to thank him for his service on the ambassador team. And finally, oh, that the ambassadors will be working with the PBIA in putting together some welcoming packets to our new businesses, so that when they come to downtown, they will not only be greeted by our ambassadors, but by the PBIA. And September 20th at 9:00 AM, not really sure what meeting this is. This is a clean and safe meeting with Jeff, Herbig, Paul, Lauer, and Brian, and he had a different name for it, so I'm not sure what group that is. What is it?
Is it the task force?
Is it, yeah, is it the new task force they formed?
I think the Downtown Response Team is my guess.
Yeah, and I couldn't remember what they're calling it, but that is September 20th at 9:00 AM, and I believe it's the Clean and Safe Task Force.
I just want to jump in and say, that sounds like a detergent that's set aside for people that have allergies.
Clean and Safe?
Yes. That's what it sounds like to me. I like the name, don't get me wrong.
Yes. Well, at any rate, for those who are interested, that's September 20th at 9:00 AM, I believe, here.
DNA is taken, maybe it could be genetic recombination.
Yeah. And that's all I have. Oh, and I also, I already previously updated you on that, the meeting I had with George and Jill for the Washington Center. That's it.
Questions for Councilmember Rowe? Lots of stuff, good stuff, cool things. Mayor Protam Jones.
Thank you, Mayor Bucksbaum. I have no report.
What have you been doing all week?
Obviously recuperating from last week, but we'll come back to that later. Any questions for the Mayor Protam? Councilmember Hankins?
First of all, I went to the Visitor Convention, VCB, Visitor Convention, whatever one I was at today, sorry. And I alluded to this earlier, that the Washington Tourism Alliance will be holding their Tourism Summit in Olympia at the Washington Center on January 28th. That should bring between 250 and 300 people into our community, which is great. Second thing, on Thursday, as I said before, I did do a ride-along with the Olympia Police Department from the 8 to 12, to the midnight shift. And again, it was eye-opening, and gave me an opportunity to really have some really good conversations with the men and women on our police force. And I would really highly encourage all of you, if you haven't had the opportunity or you haven't done it in a while, to take a ride-along. You need to see what's going on, so that we can start looking at maybe some different ways to approach some of these problems. I also want to say thank you to all the men and women, not only on that shift, but who really are there to protect us each and every day. And I saw such grace under very difficult situations. I also saw an amazing amount of multitasking. They beat anyone, hands down, on the planet, how they can do all of that. They're also very dedicated and compassionate, and they really have this innate belief in humanity and in the goodness, because if they didn't, I don't know how they would come back the next day, put on that uniform and go back on those streets, because they see so much and experience so much. And they really do believe in this community and in what they're doing, and so I am very grateful. So I would really suggest that you all do this. And then the last thing was at the NINA Neighborhood Party and Picnic. I want to show you what some of the neighborhood grant money did. The Northeast Neighborhood-- some of the neighborhood grant money did. The Northeast Neighborhood Association used grant, applied for a grant with the Neighborhood Matching Funds and did, provided their neighborhood with earthquake preparedness, some things. And so you'll find these. They sent out bags with information in them about earthquake and what you should be putting in the bag, and you can either keep this in a car or under a bed so you're prepared. And then they also gave to their members a Grab and Glow Safety Cup, which has your whistle, your glow stick, some water, food, hand warmers. It's amazing what can go in the cup. So you'll also find those as well. And this is a great thing for all neighborhoods to start looking at trying to do and being prepared. So thank you very much.
Great. Questions for Councilmember Hankins? Councilmember Rowe?
Two questions. Did you say that was for earthquake preparedness? Any extras that we could pass along to Moses? I think that would be a really nice gift for Moses. But number two, what was the first thing you spoke to?
Is there convention?
What was the other topic?
Police?
Yes, yes, yes. I really, really appreciated your kind comments about our police force. I feel like so many times, all they do is get the negative, particularly at our public comment, and I just want to thank you for saying those things. I have been saying for four years, I'll do a ride-along, and I will, but I too just want to thank them for their service, and I just really appreciate what you said.
Yes, nicely. Councilmember Langer?
A couple of things. I do appreciate your report on the police. I think one thing that is useful to point out is there's a major change happening in the police department. We are, we're basically turning over from one generation to another generation, and I would, I think that it's really helpful for the community to welcome the new police officers who are coming onboard. And there's kind of this new youthful energy in the department with these new people coming onboard, and I'm really appreciative of them being here as somebody who has done pre-employment psychologicals for the City of Olympia in the past, although as a city council member, I'm no longer doing them. I think that the people that I have met so far, I'm really excited about, and I think we've got some really good people coming onboard, and I look forward to having them become part of the community, especially since we are doing, I mean, a lot of the work of police officers is actually being in the community and being part of the community and being responsive to community needs. So I'm really very pleased. The other thing is, I was recently in Istanbul earlier this year, and their earthquakes are a big issue. And I think when Moses speaks about, you know, the concerns he has, perhaps he speaks about them in ways that are not, that people don't take him seriously, but in fact, the issue-
Jim Reeves. His name is Jim Reeves.
Yeah, Jim Reeves. And the fact is that Jim, that the issue that he talks about is serious, and having these cups and having emergency supplies in your home. And, for example, one of the things that I learned is that pretty much everybody has a whistle by their bed in Istanbul, so that if there is an earthquake and their building collapses, that if they're still alive, they can whistle so that people know that they're there. And so I think having a whistle in our little packet is, I think, a reminder that we do need to be prepared for this, because we are in the Pacific Rim of Fire, and we are definitely dealing, that we, earthquakes are a real risk here, as we found out when the Nisqali quake happened and other ones have happened in the past. And we're looking to having potentially really big quakes in this area.
All good points. Any further questions, comments for Councilmember Hankins? I do want to reinforce that having the bags is great. Having a plan with the bags is also important. Knowing how to reach your loved ones and having an emergency contact plan is part of the process. So I hope that we're all serving as models for that. And thanks for your report. I have a couple of brief items. I'm going to end with a very brief report about where I was last 10 days and why I'm a jet-lagged guy. I want to just start first. We did hear our Finance Committee report under Other Business related to Washington Center. I do want to take the opportunity, though, to say that on October 29th, we will have our Council of Neighborhood Associations sponsored budget forum. That is a Tuesday. That council is in recess. It will happen in council chambers, and that date is October 29th, and it is up on our website and announced there. I'm grateful for the continuing conversation about our community renewal area work. I want to acknowledge and appreciate the discussion that council had last week. I think it's very important to keep our conversation going about that. We're continuing to learn together about the options and opportunities, as well as the issues and interests related to community renewal. I do want to acknowledge that we will be hearing from our consultant team on October 1st. That's on our agenda under Other Business. We'll be getting an initial report from our consultant team at that time. In between now and then, I will continue my work with the Citizens Advisory Committee. I want to remind everybody that there is no meeting a week from tonight. And now, I just want to say a few words. We can dim the lights, but I also want to try to sweeten you up a little bit with some pineapple shortcakes, which are a gift from the mayor of Taipei. If you'd like to partake, you can take a little cake. And before going further in the slides, I just, I want to just acknowledge and let everybody know that for the last 10 days, and you can go around to staff as well, for the last 10 days, I have been in Taiwan, attending the, first, the Asia-Pacific Cities Summit, which has been held biannually for the last 17 years, traded off between Brisbane, Australia, and Kaohsiung, Taiwan. It's been an opportunity these last 17 years for cities from the Pacific region to share information and plan together about how to meet some of our common challenges, everything from economic development challenges to things like sea level rise, meeting our transition from our current business practices to green businesses, to talking about sea level rise. It was a great opportunity for me to participate in dialogue with over 80 nations, mayors from 80 nations. I was honored to be able to participate as the guest of the mayor of Kaohsiung and also the Ministry of Taiwan. My first days were spent in Kaohsiung, and I just want to reinforce that if you were to zero in on that, you'd see the evidence as I sit here in Sun Yat-sen University at the very southern portion of the island of Taiwan, and I've got that picture of Washington State in my hand that shows where Olympia is and where Thurston County is, and I'm talking about our region. Then in this particular group, I'm talking about sustainability as well as the great work of our Economic Development Council. Most of the event happened in Kaohsiung. Kaohsiung has a modest harbor, you might say. It's actually absolutely huge. It's a sweeping harbor, which, the one view was looking south, this is looking north. It's the biggest port in Taiwan, massive shipping and commerce that reaches worldwide. I would say that Kaohsiung, although this is a very industrialized community, it's also very much invested in its environment. And this is an example of reclaimed estuary. This used to be a plywood manufacturing plant, and I went on an extensive tour of a very large wetland area. Those plantings, this is a tidal area that is right, feeds into the Love River. Those are mangrove plantings made to retain the bank and filter water. You can see some of the beautiful architecture in the form of the bridge. It's really quite an extraordinary accomplishment. This is the Visitor Center, which is traditional architecture that is done in the shape of a shrimp. And it is an interpretive center that has amazing exhibits and really is truly a tribute to the commitment that the mayor of Kaohsiung is taking in environmental best practices in her region. I also want to acknowledge the mayor of Taipei, who is in the center of this picture. The building immediately behind the mayor is Taipei 101. Used to be one of the tallest buildings in the world. But here we are, this is part of our delegation. The gentleman all the way over to the left is Daryl Smith, who's deputy mayor of the City of Seattle. The next person is the mayor of Adelaide. The guy all the way over on the right with the Olympia Wooden Boat Festival cap, that's me. And the gentleman immediately in the picture to my left, forgive me, I can't remember his name, he is from Australia. But the mayor of Taipei is particularly proud of his U-bike system, and U-bikes are a supplement to the metro transit system in Taipei. You can use your Metro card, your Metro pass card, to both ride Metro and also access a bike, unlock a bike, and have a free one-hour pedal to do your errands or to pedal to a different transit station. It is wonderful. You can see the place where you just, you place your card, where the little hand in the card is. The bikes are very comfortable. They have three gears. I really never needed to have more than one gear, but they have comfortable seats, very sturdy, easy to steer. You can see the little basket in them. And this was sort of a picture of the delegation. Many of these folks were at the Asia-Pacific Cities Summit. There was quite a bit of camaraderie between the delegates. I have to say, it really was truly an honor to participate in this event, and in 2015, it will be in Brisbane. So maybe there will be an opportunity again. I will do a more extensive report, both for St. Martin's University, for the Evergreen State College, and I've talked to staff at the Timberland Library. So over the next few months, I am looking forward to sharing more the full range of my report and experience, which included discussions with three universities in Taiwan and several cities, and taking 526 pictures. So anybody that can tolerate that level of a presentation, I won't impose that on you tonight, but I did want to give you at least some clue of where I've been. It's been an incredible journey. I am a very tired guy, being up since 2:30 this morning, but it's nice to be back. So that's my report, and I will take any questions. Councilmember Langer?
Just want to say welcome back, even though you have been up since 2:30 in the morning. Thank you for being here and doing all this.
Bokachi.
You're welcome.
I'm just curious, what was the weather like? Was it beautiful the whole time?
Good question. So Kaohsiung, it did not rain, but it was, the sun, it is tropical. You go out in the sun, it is intense. People are walking around with umbrellas. Air quality was not so great in the days that I was there. You could see some of the haze. You got out more towards the coast and the beaches, it was much nicer. And early morning was quite pleasant. So our trip to the wetland area, I got up at 4:00 AM. The few of us that went on that tour, it was, we watched the sunrise. It was quite pleasant, but towards the middle of the day. Taipei, we were very fortunate. Taipei is a little bit higher elevation. It's not an industrial community. It's more the finance and capital center. It was really, it was hot, but it was very pleasant, and the air quality was quite good. Yeah. Any other questions? Thanks for indulging my report. I'll look forward to hearing from the city manager when we're going to have our U-bike system in place.
We were asking if everyone had to ride their bikes with their thumbs up in Taiwan. It seemed like-
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mr. City Manager, your report.
Thank you. I have four brief items. The first one's a little more extensive. It has to do with an opportunity from the Environmental Protection Agency, and those two words don't always go together, but the Environmental Protection Agency has an Office of Sustainable Communities, and they offer a program each year that's only available to capital cities. It's called Greening America's Capitals. And we just found out about this two weeks ago, but what the EPA will do is they will send a team of design professionals to your community, landscape architecture, urban design professionals, to help you visualize how you might improve part of your community for the purpose of creating a clear implementable vision of a distinctive, environmentally friendly neighborhood that incorporates innovative, smart growth strategies, and green infrastructure systems. So they come to town, they help work on a project where you can visualize how you might make part of your community better. And so the staff has had just a couple weeks to kick this around, and the deadline is early next week. We'd like to at least submit a letter of interest to EPA for them to bring a design team here, and the proposal that we would put forward would be to look at a proposal for possibly redesigning Capital Way from the Capitol Campus to the Farmers' Market. The focus would be on retrofitting the streetscape to meet the following goals. One, a stronger sense of place and identity for the connection between the campus and downtown, could be looking at placemaking, signage, design elements, et cetera. Number two, look at the issues of untreated stormwater, the problems we have in some of our downtown, and looking at opportunities for green infrastructure streetscape such as bio-retention. Number three, look at opportunities to help recruit new economic development opportunities. Four, improve the flow and function of alternative modes of transportation. And five, highlight connections to other ongoing downtown improvements such as alleyways, historic landmarks and percival. So if we put in this letter, then we are in the competition, and they will let us know whether we are selected. And so I'd like to share this more with council, but for now, I'd just like you're okay to set a letter of intent to be considered in this EPA program.
Is council generally thumbs up? Good? Okay?
Okay, thank you. Item number two is a reminder that this Thursday, from 11:30 to 1:30 PM, the City Hall will be closed, because we will be hosting our annual City Employee Appreciation BBQ. And so City Hall will be closed, but I'm hoping you all will be able to join us for the barbecue. It's at the Japanese Garden over near the Lee Creighton Justice Center. So if you get a chance to come over and say hi to employees, we'd really love to have you. And again, a reminder, City Hall will be closed during that time, so all of our employees can take part in the appreciation. Item three, a reminder, this Saturday is Downtown Cleanup. Saturday, the 28th, Downtown Cleanup is put on by the Olympia Downtown Association, PBIA. Did you mention it already?
No, you said this Saturday.
Oh, I'm sorry, next Saturday, the 28th, yes. Sorry. Saturday, the 28th, 8:30 AM to 12:00 PM. Still time to sign up. There are still openings for cleanup crews for downtown on the 28th. And last, because Keith has been doing a lot of heavy lifting on the Shoreline Master Plan lately, we decided to give him an easier- Plan lately, we decided to give him an easier assignment for the next few days, starting Saturday, Jay and I will be out of town, so Keith will be acting city manager for four days. Something easy and light, so I appreciate Keith stepping in, so he will be your acting city manager for about four or five days next week. That's all I have.
Questions for the city manager? So just a couple of things. Indication of folks that are going to be at the Employee Appreciation Picnic? We good? Okay, so, oh, maybe? Okay, so we're going to have at least four of us here there, and I-
So it will be a social event, so everyone just be social.
We're not talking to each other.
No, be together and don't talk together.
Right. Separate picnic, separate picnic tables, no food fights, no sharing, hot dogs and hamburgers. Okay? Good?
Look at each other.
Okay, and then on Cleanup Day, Downtown Cleanup, which is a week from this Saturday, I will be there early. I have a Masters of Public Administration orientation that happens, starts at 10:30, so I will not be able to do the usual noon thank you, and I'm looking first to our mayor Protam to see if he will be available for that.
I'll have to respond to you later.
Okay, all right. So we'll, you and I will coordinate, and we'll see if we need to drop on others. Want to encourage everybody to participate. I'll try to do my share early, on the early end, and regret not being able to participate in the lunch, which is usually a lot of fun. Okay, so with that, I want to remind everybody, there is no council meeting September 24th. We do have Land Use Committee on September 26th, but our next Olympia City Council Business Meeting is October 1st, and with no further business before the Olympia City Council this evening, we are adjourned.